All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the, our regular session. Otaki honored to serve as mayor this year. I'd like to call the meeting to order. The two council members that are present this evening to my-
Eric Boon.
Oh, sorry, thank you. The two, two council members present tonight with me are on my right, Councilmember Catherine Carlton, and on my left, Councilmember Kirsten Keith. Councilmembers Mueller and, and Councilmember Klein are both absent. Councilmember Mueller wanted me to mention that he's ill tonight. He's very sick, and so is unable to attend, as well as Councilmember Klein. Over at that table, we have our city manager, Alex McIntyre. Next to him is City Attorney Bill McClure. Over on this side is City Clerk Judy Aaron. And I wanted to make sure that you knew that we'd love to have you speak. And if you'd like to speak this evening, please fill out a comment card. They're on the back tables, and kindly give that to Judy. Please put which agenda item, or whether that's under the starting public comment, if it's on a non-agenda item, and please give that to Judy so she can sort that out, and we'll call you up at, at the appropriate time. So if I can ask you to kindly all stand up and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we held a closed session, but we don't have any, we're not reporting any action taken. So next, we'll move to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once, under public comment, for a limited three minutes. Please clearly state your name and address your political jurisdiction in which you live. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment, other than to provide general information. We have several speakers this evening. Pamela Jones, come on up, welcome, followed by Fran Dean.
I could work with it.
Should we turn the podium around for you? Is that, would that be helpful?
Sure.
We won't start your time.
I don't need a podium. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Pamela Jones, resident of Menlo Park, member of the Board of Directors of the Menlo Park Historical Association. This evening, received this email from our president, Jim Lewis. "Today is Sister Cities International 62nd anniversary. What will you do today to advance peace in your community and worldwide?" And from their website, their celebration website. Sister Cities International was created at President Eisenhower's 1956 White House Conference on Citizens Diplomacy. Eisenhower envisioned an organization that could be the hub of peace and prosperity by creating bonds between people from different cities around the world. By forming these relationships, President Eisenhower reasoned that people of different cultures could celebrate and appreciate their differences, and build partnerships that would lessen the chance of new conflicts. Sister Cities International creates relationships based on cultural, educational, information, and trade exchanges, creating lifelong friendships that provide prosperity and peace through person-to-person citizen diplomacy." And a quote from President Dwight D. Eisenhower is, "I have said time and time again, there's no place on this earth to wish I would, I would not travel. There's no chore I would not undertake, if I had any faintest hope that, by doing so, I would promote the general cause of world peace."
Thank you, Pamela. And I do know, next month, we're going to have a report from the Sister Cities Committee, along with a report from the trip to Bezen this past summer. Fran Dean, good evening, welcome, followed by Annika McClure.
Good evening, and thank you. What I'd like to do is talk about the 42nd Annual Golden Acorn Awards, which will be held on Thursday, September 20th, at the Hotel Nia on Independence Drive. And as you know, the Golden Acorn Award is, is a Menlo Park tradition. And during the event, the chamber celebrates community achievement through the volunteer efforts and contributions of organizations and individuals. And each year, the award recipients are chosen from the Fields of Business Excellence, Community Service, and Professional Excellence. The recipients are individual contributors, small businesses, organizations, and nonprofits, each serving Menlo Park. And we're pleased to announce that the 200, excuse me, the 2018 recipients of the Golden Acorn Awards includes three nonprofits serving our community through performing arts, education, and senior services. Business Excellence is going to Menlo Ballet, which is a nonprofit professional ballet company, launched in 2011 here in Menlo Park, performing work that impacts Bay Area audiences through exceptional dance and innovative choreography. Menlo Ballet continues the tradition of passing dance from one generation to the next, artist to artist, and provides opportunities to local aspiring students from its official ballet school, the Menlo Park Academy of Dance. The Community Service Award is going to All Students Matter. And this is a dynamic, volunteer-led, nonprofit organization, committed to the idea that all children deserve an equal opportunity to learn. Staffed with over 200 volunteers, All Students Matter provides mentoring to over 70 classrooms in the Ravenswood School District, including Bellhaven and Willow Oak Schools. And those are grades from transitional kindergarten through 5th grade. The Professional Excellence in Public Service Award is going to our city attorney, Phil McClure, and this is in recognition of his 25 years of service to the city of Menlo Park, providing legal representation and guidance to the city, city council, and staff. And last, the Unsung Hero Award will be for Peninsula Volunteers Meals on Wheels Program. Each week, PBI Meals on Wheels Program delivers over 3,000 hot meals to homebound seniors and adults with disabilities in San Mateo County, those who are unable to cook or shop for themselves. The goal is to keep the adults nourished, healthy, and living independently in their homes with a feeling of safety. We certainly value the role that each award recipient plays to strengthen our community, and hope that you will, will join us in acknowledging their contributions. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Annika McClure, followed by Andrew Boon. Good evening, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Otaki and council members. My name is Annika McClure, and I'm with the Silicon Valley Leadership Group. And I'm here today to invite you guys to participate in the annual Applied Materials Silicon Valley Turkey Trot. So, the Turkey Trot is a 5K runner walk and a 10K walk that benefits charities to fight hunger and homelessness in the Bay Area. And in particular, the donations will go to the Housing Trust of Silicon Valley and the Second Harvest Food Bank. This year, where our goal is to raise over a million dollars that we can donate to these organizations. And we also invite everyone from the city to participate as well. And in addition to the Turkey Trot, elected officials and city employees can participate in the Mayor's Cup 5K Challenge. So each city who has the most elected officials or city employees that run in the event will win a trophy. So we hope that you guys come out. So the event will take place on Thanksgiving morning. That's Thursday, November 22nd. It starts, well, it's in downtown San Jose, and it starts on First Street. And I will send you guys more information, and I look forward to having you guys participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Annika. Andrew Boon?
Good evening, Mayor Otaki. Good evening, I wanted to share my feelings with, about the, the project to build a car parking structure in downtown Menlo Park. That's one of the things that's on your work plan, which you're discussing later this evening, and the city has taken some steps towards this year. You know, Palo Alto is actually in a similar process. Well, has long considered car parking garages and built them, and is building more of them now. One thing that they didn't do a sufficient job of, and that you should do in Menlo Park, is considering the alternatives. So, a car parking structure costs a certain amount of money, provides a certain amount of space for people to park to get to Menlo Park. I think the obvious point of building such a structure is for people to be able to visit downtown Menlo Park and shop in downtown Menlo Park. One of the alternatives to spending that amount of money, which is very considerable, tens of millions of dollars, is more investment in transportation demand management programs. You know, we say TDM, we've been talking about it for decades, but these programs actually work. You know, they work especially if they're well-designed. It's something that you can actually spend a few million dollars on, and maybe get a better outcome than building a parking structure. One of the things I think wasn't properly considered in Palo Alto was this exact fact, even though they have a Transportation Management Association, meaning they can fund alternatives to driving, like transit passes. You gotta consider that if you're spending 20 or 30 million dollars on this, how could you spend that money to achieve the same goals? Is there a way to spend 10 or 20 million dollars and avoid building a parking structure? And you should want to do that, because when you build that structure, you're locking yourselves into a, a higher dependence on automobiles. That really isn't necessary, and really isn't appropriate for the future. The future depends on transitioning away from driving. That's what the Menlo Park General Plan says. The state of California has many policies promoting that. We can't just keep supplying parking spaces for cars and expect to solve our problems. And another thing to consider is that, in the case of Palo Alto, just like Menlo Park, they, they're considering building a garage on top of an existing parking lot, which means you, you have to remove some spaces to get some more spaces, so it's especially costly. In their case, it's costing over $100,000 per parking space, when you subtract the number of parking spaces that are lost due to building a garage there. I urge you to consider alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Any other speaker cards? And I've been advised to speak into the mic, so I, we must not have the volume up, but I'll do my best. Okay, so I, I think we are, we've completed public comment. I don't think this evening we have any commission reports. So next, we'll move to the consent calendar. There's two items, G1 and G2. Is there a motion to accept or request to pull? I see a motion-
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept them with one change, and it's really minor. Just, John Kudvani's name is just misspelled, under E1, under August 13th.
On the August 13th minutes, John Kudvani's last name is misspelled.
Right. So I just wanted, he's one of our former commissioners, I just wanted to-
Sure. Absolutely. Okay, so, motion, motion made in a second. Okay, in a second by Councilmember Carlton, and... Waiting, waiting for the system here, one second.
Judy, do you want to put that I was a member?
Yep.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. And now, we'll move to regular business. The first item is H1. Approve the installation of a traffic management plan for Baywood Avenue, Clover Lane, Blackburn Avenue, McKendry Drive, and Marmona Drive for a six-month trial period, and appropriate $115,500 from the Measure A Fund for Construction Contract Administration and Inspection, and authorize the city manager to award the construction contract. We have, let's see, Associate Transportation Engineer Renee Bali fail to present the report, and we have Justin Murphy as well, next, next to him, our Public Works Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Otaki, council members, and members of the public. I'll just give a PowerPoint presentation regarding the item that's before you right now. The Neighborhood Traffic Management, Management Program, or NTMP, was adopted in November 16, 2004, and it's designed to provide consistent citywide policies for neighborhood traffic management to ensure equitable and effective, effective solutions to traffic issues such as excessive speeding above the posted speed limit or excessive cut-through traffic. It represents the city's commitment to improve its neighborhood's safety and livability. Since in its inception in 2004, this is the fourth project that's going before council. The first one, which is Monerosa, between Sand Hill Road and Sharon Park Drive, was implemented in 2006. The year later, the Traffic Calming Project on Oak Avenue, between Oak Knoll Lane and Sand Hill Road, was implemented. The latest one was the Traffic Calming Project on North Lemon, which we just recently completed. Just the, the agenda for my presentation will include the following: the NTMP Level 2 step process, the Complete Streets Commission recommendation, and finally, the STOP recommendation. There are two levels of traffic calming measures in our Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. Level 1, or Express Traffic Calming Measures, are the least restrictive measures, and includes mainly enforcement and education. Examples of Level 1 Traffic Calming Measures include traffic stop signs and selective enforcement, radar enforcement by our police, police enforcers. Level 2 Traffic Calming Measures are more restrictive and potentially might divert traffic to other streets. Examples of Level 2 Traffic Calming Measures include speed humps and traffic circles. They're a lot more cost, more costly than the Level 1 Traffic Calming Measures. Since the, the proposed Traffic Calming Measures on this project involve Level 2 Traffic Calming Measures, we are, we are following the Level 2 Measures. The slide here shows the, the flowchart of the process for the Level, Level 2 Traffic Calming Measure. The first step is the resident request and petition. It is in this step where the resident alerts the city that there's a reported traffic concern here. In the case of this project, it's speeding and excessive speeding and excessive cut-through traffic on Marmona Drive. Also, in this step, we, the, the STOP identifies the boundaries of the study area based on the reported traffic concern and the location of the traffic concern. And also, it's in this step where the petitioner goes door-to-door and receives the, or gets the signatures from at least 60% of the residents in the study area to indic, to tell the city that, yeah, there's a, a reported traffic concern here, and that the city should collect data and come up with potential solutions. So, that's when, on September 18, 2017, that's when the, the city's staff received the neighborhood, the completed Neighborhood Action Request Form with signatures from 80% or of the 180 households, which is pretty high for, compared to the other previous projects that we did. And this is the, the plan and the boundaries that were identified by, by the city, and which the petitioner presented to the residents. As you can see from the slide, there are 10 speed humps proposed on various streets. Even though the problem was on Marmona Drive, STOP decided to expand the study area to include the adjacent streets, because doing any traffic calming measure on Marmona will potentially divert traffic to the other streets, like Clover Lane, Blackburn, and McKendry Drive. And, and just to, to, from the onset, this is the type of the speed humps that are proposed on this project, and this is the, the type of speed hump that we recently installed on North Lemon, and that's acceptable to the fire district because of minimal disruption on emergency service trips. Next step is data collection, as a result of the, the petitioner, petitioners meeting the requirement of 60% of the people in the household signing. So all the, the streets in the study area share the common roadway and traffic characteristics. They are all local streets with a low-volume residential street, and it only provides access to residents and conducive for biking and walking. There are two-way roadways with rolled curb, gutter, and sidewalk, non-street parking restrictions. The posted or presumed speed limit is 25 miles per hour, which is what it, what we, we have for residential streets, and they are not designated as primary emergency service routes. In order for the project to qualify as an NTMP, it has to meet at least one of the three minimum requirements related to speed, volume, and collisions. For speed, the 80th percentile speed, which captures the peak travel speed, has to be more than five miles per hour above the posted speed limit. So in this case, in order for this project to move forward, the 80th percentile speed should be at least, or above 30 miles per hour. The street has to be primarily residential, and should not exceed 1,500 vehicles per day, which is high for a residential street. And then, the collision data during the last three years that's available should not exceed the city average for a similar type of street or intersection. This was the traffic volume, speed, and accident data collected. And from the screen, from the slide, it shows that Baywood Avenue and Marmona Drive for the eastbound direction qualifies for the NTMP project, qualifies the NTMP project because it meets the criteria related to speed. So, with that, the next step is the Neighborhood Meetings and Plan Preparation. Neighborhood Meetings is the meeting with the Complete Streets Commission, which was held on November 8, 2017, wherein STOP presented the plan and the study area to, the results of the, and then the petition to the Complete Streets Commission. This is where complete, the, the commission are asked to make any modification, deny the project, or to move forward, move the project to the next step in the NTMP process, which is, in this case, is the Survey for Trial Installation. So by the vote of 7011, the Complete Streets Commission moved the project to the next step. And subsequent to that, the STOP met with the community to talk about the, what, the possible modifications to the initial traffic plan that was presented to the Complete Streets Commission on the November 8 meeting. So the next step, and this is where we are right now, with, for the city council review, the neighborhood survey, the, on February 23rd, the STOP circulated the Resident Survey for Trial Installation with the Traffic, Traffic Management Plan. The NTMP requirement is that for 51% of the households should support the plan. So it's 51% of the households, not 51% of only those who responded. So this is the traffic management plan that was circulated as part of the Survey for Trial Installation. If you compare this with the initial traffic control, Traffic Management Plan that was brought in the commission meeting, the main difference is that the, instead of the speed hump on Clover Lane, it's, a full closure is proposed on Clover Lane. Right now, it's, there's a partial closure wherein you can't enter Clover Lane from Willow Road, but you can exit Clover Lane to go to Willow Road. And then, the addition of a yield sign on Baywood-Blackburn. So, the, the result of the survey is shown on the slide here that 58.6% said yes, supporting the plan, which meets the requirement of 51%. So moving forward to the next step, which is the city, which is the Complete Streets Commission, this is the, the final traffic management plan that was presented to the Complete Streets Commission on June 11 to review. The difference between this traffic management plan and the traffic, traffic management plan that went, that were circulated as part of the Resident Survey for Trial Installation is the removal of the proposed speed hump on Baywood Avenue. This is the result of the petition that STOP received from majority of the residents on Baywood Avenue, indicating to the staff that they don't want speed hump on Baywood Avenue. So subsequently, on June 11, the Complete Streets Commission, after reviewing the plan, considered and passed a motion 81218 in favor and one dissenting, to recommend to city council to approve the trial implementation with the following amendments or provisions: provide a bicycle access for the closure on Clover, Clover south of Willow, reserve the right to reinstate speed hump on Bay, on to Baywood pending trial installation, and to reexamine the adequacy of the six-month result even when the city council decide on the temporary term restrictions. This is this, again, the simple, sample seat ban that we're proposing to install. And this is the sample temporary road width closure with the five-foot opening for bicycles and a mountable curb, where emergency service vehicles, if they have to traverse, can, can go through, can go through it, as well as garbage trucks. This is not part of the project, but this affected the NTMP process. Back in December, there were temporary term restrictions that were implemented in the Willow's neighborhood in conjunction with the Willow Road 1-on-1 interchange project. And the one that's mostly affecting this project is the left turn restriction from Woodland to Baywood. And we did an after-study to determine the effect of the left turn restriction. And as you can see from the slide here, that the speeds have reduced considerably as well as the traffic volume. And if you're gonna see if it qualifies, if any of that will qualify, none of the, the three qualifying criterias gonna be met. The STOP's recommendation is to approve the trial installation of a traffic management plan for a six-month period for Baywood, Clover Lane, Blackburn, McKendry Drive, and Marmona. Marmona, uh, which is comprised of, uh, four speed humps on McHenry Drive, four speed humps on Marmona Drive, one speed hump on Blackburn, a yield sign on, uh, Baywood at Blackburn, and a, uh, full closure on Clover Lane. We're not recommending, uh, any speed hump on Baywood. For addition, uh, uh, for, uh, Council also to appropriate the estimated costs, uh, from Measure A Fund, uh, to construct, administer the contract, and inspect, uh, the project, and for this, and for City Council to authorize the C manager to award the construction contract once we go out to bid and, uh, select the, uh, responsible, uh, low bidder. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Quick clarifying question? Or do you wanna, I see that you wanted to...
Let them go first.
Okay. Great. So, uh, we'll go to, uh, thank you for the presentation, and, uh, we'll now go to public comment. First speaker, Peter Witten. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, but Peter Witten, followed by Leslie Gordon.
Peter, good evening.
Okay.
Thanks. Good evening. Peter Witten, one fifty Baywood Avenue. I support the, um, Staff Proposed Plan without the speed hump on Baywood Avenue. Our observation has shown that those left turn restrictions, as the, you know, um, subsequent study did reduce traffic greatly, and, you know, it's, it's really helped an awful lot, so, you know, we, you know, we appreciate all of that. So, uh, again, I support that plan, so, thanks very much.
Thank you, Peter. Leslie Gordon, followed by Susu Rabado. Good evening, Leslie.
Good evening. My name's Leslie Gordon, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am a resident of Baywood Avenue in the Willows. And my biggest message to you tonight is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I'd like to add my voice to all the others on, all of my neighbors on Baywood Avenue. Please don't throw money at a problem that doesn't exist. In my opinion, the original study did not support speed humps on Baywood Avenue. In fact, there have been zero accidents, and our speed limits, uh, were not exceeded by the amount necessary. And now, since the no-left-turn, uh, signs and the no-through-traffic stuff has happened, there's even less of a reason. Hardly anyone drives down Baywood Avenue anymore. So, number one, if there's no problem, let's not spend a hundred thousand dollars to fix it. Number two, a speed hump will cause more problems than it will fix, uh, and I won't go into the details about air quality problems and noise pollution. This was, this whole traffic management petition and problem was started by someone who lives several blocks away, and I would say, well, if they would like it on their streets, they can have it, but, um, it was not the residents on Baywood Avenue who chose to include our street in the study. It was simply arbitrarily extended to include our street. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susu Rabado, uh, followed by Kristen O'Son. I apologize, maybe it was Susan, I don't know, but Susu?
Susu, thank you. I'm the petitioner that, um, got this whole thing going. Um, five hundred and twenty-eight days is how long I've been working on this. Five hundred and twenty-eight days, it's a year and a half just to get to this point, just asking for the six-month trial. So this is really, it's a long process. Ninety days is how long it took to go from the Complete Streets Commission to get to you guys. We waited three months just to wait for this. I think the process, the NTMP process, it's very valuable, but it's very arduous, and it really has a lot of room for improvement and could be simplified. The no-turn signs have been so incredibly helpful. Thank you so much for that no-turn sign at Baywood. It really has helped. It's helped with cut-through traffic and volume, and, I mean, I abide by that because I don't want to get a ticket, so I go around. But we still have a speed problem on Marmona. I live on Marmona, I'm not working right now, I see it every day. It's during the week, from like one to six P.M. I won't let my boys play out front. I won't, that, won't let them play in the driveway. They're six and a half and eight years old, I don't want a ball to go into the street. I live right after the curve at Blackburn, and if people are just going twenty-nine miles per hour or thirty miles per hour, it's so fast around that curve. With a couple cars parked on the street, it's an accident waiting to happen. So I just want you to know, the speed problem is still a problem. And if anybody's concerned about McHenry, I just wanted a quick mention on that. Why are we doing speed bumps on McHenry? That's more of a forward-thinking thing. There's no current speed problem on McHenry, we're just doing it proactively, since it's pretty parallel to Marmona. If we do speed bumps on Marmona, we don't want the problem to go to McHenry. Just a reminder that out of everybody that did vote on, um, the survey, out of the people that voted, eighty percent of the people in the notification area are in support of this. So we have a really big support network of people that want all of these ideas implemented. I'm really anxious to see this put through for trial installation, and really appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen O'Son, followed by Amar Murigan. Kristen, good evening.
Hi. I, it's Kristen Okone, and you're forgiven. People get it wrong all the time. I am of a little different generation than a lot of the moms that have been working on this project so diligently for so long, but my children were those younger children about twenty, twenty-five years ago, and a group of families and moms got together and tried to implement some of these same measures, and it went down at the time. Speed bumps were a little bumpier, and, um, people were really concerned about noise of brakes and things like that. We were pretty disappointed. I was thrilled to see this come back up again. My children aren't impacted anymore. I could be one of those people on the block who might say this doesn't affect me so much. I live on Marmona. I still see that cut-through traffic. What you've done so far with the left-turn measure has been really helpful. I was pulled over twice the first two weeks. The kind Menlo Park Police only gave me a warning. It's hard to learn a new habit from how you come into your neighborhood, but it has made a difference. But the speed could be deadly, and I think that with twenty-five years past, here is a golden opportunity to approach this problem again, give it a six-month trial, and our hope, our strong hope is that it will, um, be something you want to adopt permanently, but we truly appreciate if you could, uh, go ahead and make the plan, accept this plan, to have this trial and give it a chance after all this time.
Great. Thank you. Amar, followed by Jack Morris.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, thank you for your time. My name is Amar Murigan, I live at one thirty Baywood Avenue. I'd first like to thank the Council and the city staff for all the work they've done on this. I know Renee and his team and everybody in the Transportation Department has done a lot of work over the past year and a half on this topic, and I really appreciate it, and, and on behalf of my family as well. My comments for the Council's consideration are narrowly related simply to the issues relating to Baywood Avenue and not this NTMP, not this NTMP as a whole. I first brought this issue up with Chip Taylor and Atul Patel and other members of the city, uh, back in October of two thousand and twelve. I remember having a meeting on this topic with them, where we talked about potential turn restrictions as being a low-impact solution to the traffic issue that was on our street. What we also talked about was the fact that me and my neighbors did not want speed bumps or other, uh, more impactful measures that were gonna counteract the benefits of whatever measures we implemented. We have a lot of residents on our street who've lived there for a long time. They spend all day there, um, you know, they're not working. We don't want this, the additional noise and pollution that comes from having eight hundred to a thousand cars bounding over a speed bump, um, every day. And so, uh, we didn't want speed bumps back in two thousand and twelve, and our residents have spoken loudly and clearly that people on Baywood don't want a speed bump on our street now, um, as evidenced by the petition that you all have in, uh, in your materials. As a gateway to our neighborhood, and given our proximity to Woodland, Middlefield, and Willow, as well as the Willows Market, residents on our street already bear the brunt of the negative quality-of-life consequences of traffic, including noise and increased pollution, and speed bumps would significantly exacerbate these quality-of-life issues, not mitigate them. With that said, uh, we fully respect the rights of our neighbors on other streets to request speed bumps to be installed on their streets, and, um, we would simply like, uh, the Council to recognize that the NTMP doesn't need to be a one-size-fits-all approach for every street in the neighborhood. So consistent with the Staff's recommendation, uh, we ask that the Council not install a speed bump on our street. Lastly, as evidenced by the data collected in May, uh, we don't feel that the new data substantiates the need for any traffic calming measures on our street, as those speeds have reduced considerably, as have the volumes, and in fact, um, I don't believe that the new data would support a level-two mitigation, uh, on our street, as it doesn't meet the speed, traffic, or collision criteria. So lastly, and, and again, I want to thank the city staff for all the work, and, and thank the Council for installing the, the no-turn signs, and I would urge that you make them permanent. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Jack Morris, followed by John Wallison. Mr. Morris, as he's walking up, our former Council member and former mayor, welcome.
Good evening, Council. Jack Morris, forty-year more or less, well, forty-year-plus resident on Baywood Avenue. I don't want to take a lot of time, I'd just like to say that I agree, basically, uh, with what Amar just presented in the previous few speakers. And, uh, I, I do support the Staff's recommendation to, uh, go ahead with, to approve the, the NTMP for, uh, as, for this item. But, as has been mentioned, the big thing here is that, uh, no-left turn off of Woodland, that's part of mitigating the impact of the construction, uh, on Willow Road traffic. And, uh, personally, I think, uh, it would be, uh, very important to keep that kind of, uh, restriction. Maybe the times could, would need to be adjusted somewhat after, hopefully, the construction at one-on-one is finished, but, uh, I think just taking that sign out would be a big mistake. And, uh, one thing that does need to be done from time to time is the police presence to enforce that. When it first came in, this has been noticed, they did a very good job, and now that it seems to be working well, um, uh, their presence isn't, isn't there as often, and, uh, I would, really be disappointed if it disappeared all, altogether. So basically, I, I support the, uh, your approval, or hopeful approval, of the Staff's recommendation on, on this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jack. John Wallison, followed by Lynn Bramlett.
Good evening, Jen.
Good evening, Council. I'm Jen Wallison, and tonight I'm representing Parents for Safe Routes, and, um, I want to thank you and staff, but I especially want to thank Susu for bringing this forward. I met Susu probably about a year ago at a community meeting about this issue at the Upper Laurel Campus, and immediately I was like, this is a woman I want to know. She cares about the greater community. She is not doing this, you know, for her own, for her own, uh, personal gain, she's really doing this for the neighborhood and for the community. And I also want to point out that to qualify for the NTMP, you can either qualify under speed or volume, and this was qualifying under speed. So while the volume may have decreased because of the turn restrictions, there's still a speeding issue, um, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. I also want to address some environmental concerns with the speed bumps, and to say there are some environmental benefits by having calmer streets, where you'll get more bikers and walkers out, and so that actually has a, a benefit. I also want to point out that although Susu's here and some of her neighbors who are in support, there isn't like a huge crowd from the Willows that came out, and I think it's because of the petitions and that they've already stated their case, so I don't want that to reflect that there isn't an overwhelming support for this project, just because not a lot of people are here speaking on behalf of it. And, um, finally, I, I have to say this NTMP process is miserable, and, um, I just think that as a city, we need to look at how we can get our streets safer, faster, and easier. And, um, right now, we have the NTMP, which it took Susu a year and a half. We have this petition system where people just get really angry and they start writing you a million emails. And then we have the TMP, which is our Transportation Master Plan, which is this long-range, um, thing, but these issues of making our streets safe should just be basic and easier to implement. So I would, um, urge you to do what you can to expedite these things. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Lynn Bramlett, followed by Andrew Boone. Hi, Lynn.
Hi. So, good evening, Council, and Jen's remarks in a way are a nice setup for mine, because, I do think our city would greatly benefit from a community-based strategic planning process, and not this year, but sometime next year. I first got the idea from Clay Curtin, who mentioned strategic planning, and it would, I think, solve a lot of, um, problems, you know, the pushing, the petition, doing this or that. But I digress. Here I'm talking about this project in relationship to the capital improvement budget. Now, I don't think it, it's sort of like a capital improvement project, except for the short time period, but it could continue. And what exactly is a capital improvement project, um, yeah, I would say isn't always clear, and I don't see it on your work plan, I don't see it, you know, in the capital improvement budget, and I've gone over those details pretty carefully. It could very well be there, and I missed it, but I don't think it's there. So, um, I think it's important if we add projects that are like that, that we update that document quarterly, just so we can keep track of the spending, and I have made some suggestions separately to the Finance and Audit Committee, and helped to work on them toward improvement in that area. The one additional thing I want to caution, because I know we have staff shortages right now, um, and a lot of projects that need doing, though this one certainly sounded very needed, and I know traffic is horrible out there, it would be really important just to avoid anything that in any way appeared to be a project moving forward for political reasons. You know, I have to just mention it with an election going on, your projects coming through District Two, maybe District Four, they're gonna get additional scrutiny, so it would be important just to add the reason why it's moving forward, in case anyone conceivably, you know, might, might question that later. It would be helpful to add a few details to the staff report. Thank you.
Andrew Boone, next.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Andrew Boone, I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto, and first I'd like to say that I'm impressed that these items about making streets safer actually seem to appear on your agenda regularly, which I would say is uncommon in most of our neighboring cities. Usually, this thing wouldn't come to the Council for discussion and consideration, so... so I'm glad to see that. Secondly, speed humps, I think, are good, a good thing to build on streets where you've measured the speed and it's high, like 30 miles per hour, for car traffic is just way too high in a residential street, should be 20. There's no reason people need to drive faster than 20 miles per hour, you're only going a block. It's, it's very short distances. The speed humps on Alma, and on Woodland, and on Willow, those are the ones where I see, because I ride my bike there. I think from, I think it's clear that they work. People don't drive really fast on Alma, for example, even though the paved area is really wide, because the hump is there. You're going to have to slow down, and so it kind of sets a maximum speed, in a sense. And I, I think they work, and they're, they're worth it. The type with the cut in the middle, so that you can ride your bike through there without going over that hump, is a, is a great improvement. The, the shape of the speed hump itself is important. The ones on Alma and the ones on Woodland are actually kind of harsh. They're a harsh bump when you hit it, that's my feeling. As a bicyclist, I know for sure when you drive over them, it's a similar thing. They're unnecessarily kind of steeply shaped, and they can be just a little bit less intrusive, or, or less, less of a hump, a little bit smaller, and a little bit gentler shape. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that they shouldn't be there. They, they should be there in places where you've noticed speeding. I think that, you know, hearing about all of the requirements that it takes to get these kind of safety improvements considered are probably a little bit too much. Making safe streets should be, you know, a more fundamental part of what Menlo Park does as a city, you know? Every street should be safe. They're not, absolutely. And the most hazardous streets, there's actually nothing being done on. El Camino Real, Woodland, Willow, Bayfront Expressway, no safety improvements at all, despite being very much more dangerous than the neighborhood streets we're talking about. I think Menlo Park should comprehensively look at those streets. You have a transportation master plan, so now's the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. I don't think there are any other public speakers. Thank you very much, everyone. So I'll come back up here, and I think Councilmember Carlton?
Yeah.
I think you may be first.
Okay. I like that this is a trial, and that we're going to check and make sure that this is something that's appropriate as we make these changes. With regard to Mr. Morris's comments about police presence and the no-turn signs off Willow, would you like to address that for us? I mean, I agree that we need police presence as we make these changes.
Yeah. So that's something that we would follow up with the Chief of Police on, he's very tuned in, and we, with this recommendation this evening, we could ask him to increase the presence there.
Okay. And the no-turn signs off Willow?
The no-turn signs off, did you say, off of Willow?
Yeah.
This, the sign, I think the people were talking about was off of Woodland onto Baywood, but you're talking about the other three off of, onto Willow. All four of those were installed last December, and they're due to the construction at Willow 101, and so they're, will be in place until that construction's over, and there'll be a council action that would require them to stay up, so next spring.
So they'll be there for at least another year, throughout the trial?
Yep. And then we'll come back to the council with the action before they actually come down.
Okay. So we can look at that in a year's time. So, I'm a, I'm a big supporter of local control, even down to the granularity of local control for residents that live on one street. And I see that this process has been pretty thorough, and I, I agree with the staff's recommendation. Baywood residents have emailed me, called me, sent in a petition, and it appears that the majority of the people on that street would prefer not to have the speed bumps on their street, and I, and I respect that. I also see that there have been no collisions on the street, and so I'm, I'm inclined to support the staff's recommendation, and respect Bayland's request not to have that. Seeing that this is a trial, and if it doesn't work, we can revisit the whole thing in the future. Can you confirm the trial will end what month?
Excuse me, there's the, the need to install the improvements, and it's a six-month trial period.
Okay, great. So I'm, I'm in favor of the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, Councilmember Keith.
Thank you. Thanks to staff for bringing this forward, and Susu, thank you very much for spearheading this again. I, I know these processes can be really frustrating, and Kristin, I hear you when you talk about bringing this up 20 years ago. I, you know, I live off Woodland Avenue, and we brought up sidewalks on Woodland that long ago, too. And we have them now, but it took about, you know, over a decade. So, thank you. I'm sorry it takes so long, I know it can be frustrating, and I'm, you're here now, and that's, I'm glad you're here now. So, I did speak with many residents on Baywood, and Blackburn, and Armona, and McKendry, and I, too, agree, I'm not interested in putting a speed bump where people absolutely don't want them on Baywood. I, I heard that from people, and Jack, your emails and other emails, Amar, from sending those in and talking to people. And just watching, I do see a speed issue on Baywood, but I, what I heard from talking to residents around there is that, what you said tonight with the, with the no-left turn off Woodland, that's cut down quite a bit on, on that traffic. And if we close Clover Lane, and I'm looking at some people who live on Clover, and I think that that's something that people are really wanting as well, that should help in that area, too. The other ones, I think, are all appropriate, and wanted, and needed, to really slow down the traffic. And just in talking with people, I also heard that perhaps another area to look at, I know we're not talking about Woodland Avenue between Middlefield and Pope Chaucer tonight, but that could be another section that needs to be looked at. We have some already from Pope Chaucer to, to Euclid, and they, they help. I, I travel on those daily. So I am in favor of that. Let me see here. And also, as far as the permanency of the signs on Willow, I've heard a lot of people, residents in the Willow's, tell me, please just make them permanent. And I, I think that is a good idea. I think it's really helped, and I, I'm sure that when we bring that back here, you know, we can make it permanent or look at that idea, but I, I think it is a good idea. As far as more enforcement goes, we can definitely get that information to our police, and request some more enforcement there as well. And, and, and as far as what Lynn was saying, I, I think it is important that, no matter who's up here, that we look at Menlo Park as a whole, and really try and make improvements for the whole of the city. And even if there are district elections, I'm hopeful that people will still care about the entire city, and want to make sure that we're doing the right thing by the whole city. So, I, I think these will be great improvements for this area, and I'm looking forward to having them implemented. And just, some neighbors I spoke with last night, you know, was just explaining about the process, when, if we, if we were to approve it tonight, then it looks like it will be perhaps a couple of months before you actually see the, the implementation. And Justin, maybe you can talk about that, it's in the staff report, too, but...
Yes, we need to go out to bid, and hopefully get good results on the bid, that they come within budget. What the council's doing, would be doing this evening, per the staff recommendation, is authorizing the city manager to enter into the contract. That's usually an extra step, coming back to council, so we're trying to streamline that.
I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Yep. So the other thing that we need to be cognizant of is the weather conditions. We need to make sure that the weather temperature and everything is right for the, for the pavement work. So, that's something that could, if we have a really wet winter, or a cold winter, that could delay the installation.
Okay. And just to make sure that the cost isn't delaying, the cost that you've quoted, is that taking into knowledge that a lot of times our bids are coming back much higher than we anticipate?
Yeah, we, we based that on the most recent project we had on North Lemon, which is on the high side, because of the timing of the project, which was almost close to the end of summer. So I think the estimates that we, that staff prepared are, I think, on the high side.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'd hate for this to be delayed because of, of that issue. All right, I'll make a motion to approve it per the staff report.
I'll second.
Before we vote, if I could just make a couple of comments. I'm certainly very, you know, supportive of this, I want to thank staff. I also want to thank the residents on Baywood, who sent the, the emails, and I have been reading them the last couple of days, and certainly seen a very strong consensus about not having speed bumps on, on your particular street. And I'm also glad to see that in the final version of the, of the proposal, that, that there will not be speed bumps on Baywood. I just had a couple of quick follow-up questions, I, I just wanted to make sure, so the fire districts reviewed it, they're fine. I know often they have concerns about speed bumps, particularly if it's on a primary emergency response route. I'm assuming that they're fine with that?
Yes, Mayor Taki, we talked to the fire district about this plan, and they approved it.
Great. And then the Clover closure versus half closure, the, just wanted to make sure, I didn't see any opposition to that. Often closures will, will generate some opposition. So what you're hearing, and certainly from the residents on Clover, that that's fine, and, and you have not heard any opposition to, to closing?
Yeah, we haven't heard any opposition to the closure.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure of that. And then, so I'm certainly supportive of, of this. I just want to make a general comment, that I'm really glad to hear that those no-left turn, you know, signs are working. It's nice to hear that, and that that has addressed a lot of the issues, and it's also raising to me an interesting, I mean, I hear you, the NTMP process is a very arduous process. I know it was put into place long before I was on the council, just because I know that there's always controversy over, over whether traffic might get shifted from one street to another, another street by traffic calming measures, and I know that was put in place. But last year, when we had the construction closing, we implemented a couple of, for example, the left turn lanes, and so, under, under what was essentially a construction crisis and having to do that, and that seemed to have worked out, you know, pretty well. And then, of course, I think, as, as was mentioned, we have the Transportation Master Plan working its way through. So hopefully, as we get that done, that can help to sort of inform, and perhaps, we may not have to go through, you know, our residents don't necessarily have to go through the NTMP as often, if we have the overall Transportation Master Plan in place, but that maybe we have some mechanism to do the trial and error like we did with, you know, and as it turned out with, with the no-left turns, it's turned out to be a good move. So, so anyway, this has nothing to do with tonight's decision, but it's something that I'm learning from, from just this one, one process, and very much appreciate all of the residents who were engaged, involved. Susu, your initiative on that, and all of the residents who've been engaged in it, the Complete Streets Commission, and of course, our staff to bring this forward. So with that, I think we have a motion and second, do we? All right, thank you, everyone. Okay, the, the next item, item H2, is to adopt an updated city council work plan. We have Assistant City Manager Nick Pagaros to present the report, and we will also have public comment, and, and then followed up with a discussion. So, Nick, good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mr. Mayor. My name's Nick Pagaros, I'm the Assistant City Manager, and I'm pleased to transmit our third-quarter update on the city council's adopted work plan this evening. Just for the benefit of the audience, the work plan was adopted by the, was established by the council at a special meeting on January 29th, subsequently adopted. There are six priority projects, with 53 additional projects. Approximately two-thirds of those projects are managed by the Public Works Department. The work plan was amended on the 15th of March to include some additional feedback and direction from the council, and we have, we transmitted two quarterly updates, one in August and one in April. For this evening's update, as outlined in the staff report, we are providing, we're doing, based on some challenges that we've had relative to staffing, we are, we have refined the work plan to update milestones, and as well as identify areas that may experience some challenges resulting from a variety of different drivers. The first group of projects that you'll see here are items that if you look at the work plan, action items, and milestones, you'll see that there are some specific guidelines or directions that we would need from council to move forward. Additionally, there are a couple of projects that require additional funds. The next group of projects are on hold, contingent upon our ability to recruit some of the vacancies that we have in our Public Works Group. You'll see the list there. To help provide some context of the impact of vacancies that we have, that we have experienced, we included a couple of charts in the staff report. The first details the vacancies by department, and you'll see here that the Public Works Department is at the top of the list with 13 and three-quarter vacancies, which is about 20%. Overall, citywide, we're at 15%. However, I would note that there, there's, that this number was produced last week, and there may very well be changes as, as, as we, as we experience just normal, you know, business activity, both recruitments and resignations. With respect to replacing these positions, you'll see that here, the recruitment timeline is rather lengthy for some of our more technical positions. Most importantly and critically, in our planning and, or our community development in our Public Works Department, you'll note that we have recruitment timelines that are well in excess of half a year, approaching a year timeframe. And as we move forward with our recruitment process, clearly that means that work, or the resources may not be available for progress on different work plan items. So that was a very quick review of the staff report. What we're seeking this evening is for you to provide direction on work plan update, as outlined in the attachment, and we would transmit our next quarterly update in December. And Public Works Director Justin Murphy is here to answer any questions you may have specific to projects.
Great, thank you, Nick and Justin. Unless there are any clarifying questions, I'm going to go to public comment. Let's see, so first speaker we have is Raina Lehman, followed by Andrew Boone. Raina, good evening, welcome.
Good evening, city council members, staff, and fellow Menlo Park residents. My name is Raina Lehman, and I'm here representing the San Mateo County Central Labor Council and United Way Bay Area. I also live in Menlo Park and raised my two children here. I'm fortunate to own a home in Menlo Park, because both my husband and I have good union jobs with good pay and benefits. Not all people who live and work in Menlo Park are that fortunate. Tonight, I rise to implore the council to retain and prioritize, prioritize for action the minimum wage ordinance work plan item, which is currently on hold on the work plan. On the surface, with a median household income of $132,000, we're an affluent city. But 20% of our households earn under $50,000 a year before taxes. Average rent for a two-bedroom apartment here in our town is about 40, over $46,000 a year. Female heads of households are not doing so well in Menlo Park, 32% of them are below the federal poverty rate of $25,000. the federal poverty rate of $25,000 a year for a family of four. Some of our children are in poverty. A family of four in San Mateo County requires an annual income of about $126,000 to be self-sufficient. So let's take a look at that $15 an hour minimum wage that we might be talking about. It's $31,200 a year before taxes. It would take about four minimum wage jobs, four $15 an hour jobs, to be self-sufficient in Menlo Park. Our unemployment rate is really low. Most of us are working. It's just everyone's not earning enough in San Mateo, in, in Menlo Park. $15 is not enough, but at least, at least it's a place to start. City of, City of San Mateo led the way two years ago. Workers in that city will raise, will reach $15 an hour next year. Belmont, Redwood City also passed minimum wage ordinances with no detrimental side effects to local economies. If anything, raising the minimum wage stimulates local economies. Local paychecks are spouted locally. And in order to attract and retain the workers that we need, and we're seeing all those vacancies, most local employers already pay at least $15 an hour. Waiting for the minimum wage to rise on the state schedule is just too slow. The approved Menlo Park work plan is ambitious. There are lots of important things to do, but skimping on our local workforce is not the way to go. Please use your leadership to join our surrounding cities in raising the minimum wage to 15 by 19. Thank you.
Thank you, Raina. Andrew Boone.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Boone. I live on Woodland Avenue in East Palo Alto. I also came here tonight to urge you to direct the staff to move forward on the minimum wage ordinance for Menlo Park. That's something that among all of the items on your 2018 work plan is actually one of the least time-consuming for staff because of what it is. You're, it would be considering establishing a minimum wage ordinance for Menlo Park, like many of our neighboring cities have done, many. 16, last time I looked it up, in the Bay Area, have already taken this step of establishing their own minimum wage ordinance. And many have come very recently because of, you know, the crisis that we're in, that people simply cannot afford to pay the rent and other basic necessities of life. So, you know, a minimum wage ordinance is, the ordinance itself is very simple. It's, you have to, you know, just copy paste. Copy San Mateo's ordinance and replace wherever it says San Mateo with Menlo Park, and you're done. You have the ordinance. Community-wise, there should be community support for it. There should be, you know, at meetings, people have to come and say collectively, "We want this." That's the only thing that I think is the prerequisite. You schedule a meeting so that we, we have community support, and then schedule the time to be reviewed by the appropriate commissions and yourselves. I'm saying, compared to all the other things that you've got on your work plan, this is not a lot of time. This is a small amount of time for a big benefit, a really big benefit. People work in Menlo Park, and they have to support their families, and they're thinking for the future. And people just can't get by on $12 or $13 an hour. It's unreasonable. So step into this century, adopt your own minimum wage, let's move forward, and make a community that, you know, is closer to something where everyone can be a part of it. I mean, it's very expensive to live here, and if the wage is so far below what it takes to pay for an apartment, that's not an inclusive community. That's an exclusive community. We should be an inclusive community. And raising the minimum wage is, is a one, one critical step to achieve that. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, I think we'll bring it back up here. So, so let's go back to the slides. What sort of, I mean, quite frankly, the, the staffing tables tell a pretty big story. And so in many ways, we're, we're kind of looking for your guidance, too, in terms of just trying to understand and absorb the, the impact that this is having on, on the work plan that, you know, we, we've certainly been operating on for most of the year and certainly appreciate that there are several items that have, that have successfully been completed through it. So tell us where, in particular, are there, you're looking for, for guidance on this.
Mr. Mayor, so really what we're giving to you is, is our recommendation on what to do with the work plan. And we really are looking to bridge between now and January. Because then the council in January will sit down and revisit the work plan wholesale and figure out what do you want to do in the 2019 year. So what we're saying is, we just need to get ourselves between now and the end of the year, given the staffing challenges we have.
Okay. So if I see this correctly, for example, the top six items that we have prioritized are continuing.
We, we are keeping them as the top six, and what we've told you in last January and February was, we will, we will absolutely pursue these. But with the staffing challenges that we have, it will be at the cost of other projects at this point. Because the council said, "These are the top six priorities. We need to keep moving forward on these."
Got it. Any other comments or? Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Thank you for your staff report. And yeah, it is challenging right now to keep projects moving forward. And I do see you have a couple of checkmarks by district elections and the Guild Theater and our cost allocation plan and user fee study, our Charter City Initiative and our employee engagement organization development. But a lot of these are in the Public Works Department. And so Justin, that, that seems to be the biggest, a really big challenge. And while people, all of us want to see projects move forward, you need, you need more, more people in your department, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And could you put that screen back up that shows the vacancies and the number of days? I mean, I know it's not just your department, but... And also, do you think that, given what we just talked about, that last project, I mean, with the staffing shortages, do you think that that's something that the, you can get an RFP app on still, or is that going to be delayed?
The project that we just discussed is not delayed. And there's a number of projects where, for which there's a progress being made. Everybody that's here is working hard in, in that. So there, there will be things that will get done, but there will be some things that we, we did have the list of projects that are on hold. Any project that is not in the top six, we are, we did identify what progress we're looking to make. And so there's a number of things that are, where we've already awarded contracts, so like the Jacklisle Park restroom, you know, that's, that's definitely underway. The Corp Yard well, we've awarded the contract, so that's on track. So there's a number of...
And that's for the emergency well?
Emergency well. So there's a number of things that are on track with our current staffing. If anything changes with the additional staffing, we may need to revisit that. But yes, there's, there's a lot of work that's being done. There will be more progress that will be done. But our focus is going to be on the top six projects. And so that's, that's what we're really committed to. And there's two, two of the top six that Public Works is focused on.
Thank you. And then I just have a question for Mr. McClure. We, Andrew, thanks for coming over and over and speaking about minimum wage, and Raina, thanks for speaking about that tonight. I just wanted to ask you, Bill, you know, here it's as easy as cutting and pasting, say, San Mateo's. Can you just comment on that? Is it that easy, or is it something that can be done this year?
I mean, it's, it's basically whatever the direction of the council is. There's certainly a number of models of the ordinance. It wouldn't be writing it, you know, from scratch. We would certainly look at other models of ordinance. We, in fact, I think we have a number of those. Jim Kogan had pulled together a lot of the information previously, because I think he did the staff report that came to the council before on the topic.
And, and does your, you have the capacity to do that?
Yes. I mean, there, there's a lot going on, but the answer is, if the council directs it and when it directs it, we'll figure out a way to get it to you. But it, it's not just going to be us. It's going to require, you know, some other folks to provide work on it, city manager's office and stuff, too.
Okay. Primarily legal, then?
But primarily, it would be from our department, based on whatever the direction of the council is.
Okay.
Well, I do want to, but I, I mean, as we heard, there's, there's got to be public outreach. That's the, you know, there's got to be...
Can you talk about that, too?
Yeah, I mean, that's the bigger piece of it, is it depends on what kind of public outreach you want to do. That's not something that would be done through the city attorney's office. So somebody would have to be the, do the noticing, create the noticing, get it out, publish it. You know, somebody's got to then, you know, are those done as a public meetings? Are they done by the council? Are they done by, I don't think we have a commission that it would go to. So it's either going to be done by the council or public meetings directed by staff or a subcommittee of the council or, you know, whatever that process is. But ultimately, you have to decide what that is and give us direction.
Okay, right. And I agree, the public outreach piece is the bigger piece here, because you can cut and paste, but there is going to have to be a lot of public outreach. And I'm looking at Fran as well, from our chamber. There has to be a lot of public outreach to our businesses and the city. So that, that's the bigger, the bigger, you know, piece, probably.
And through the mayor, Councilmember Keith, if I can just elaborate a little bit on what Mr. McClure said, is there, our original intention when we had a full Housing and Economic Development Office was Jim and his staff was working on this, and we had a plan to move forward. We had the public outreach really tentatively set up to go. As you know, that entire office has disappeared because all the employees have left. And now Clay Curtin, to his credit, is trying to carry the burden of the housing side of the office, because that really is a priority, continues to be one for the council through Mark Munzer's office. So it's one of these things where we had a plan, we had a great plan, and we were going to do this, but we've lost the people who were going to carry the torch on, on behalf of the city. And there is one more piece that I think we need to understand also, is the enforcement piece. At the end of the day, you plug this thing in, how do we enforce it? And there are a lot of cities we could talk to about joining them and having them be the enforcement arm for us, but those conversations also haven't happened. So there's a lot more to it than a cutting and a pasting of a, of a process.
Okay, thanks. I wanted just to get that clarification. So I mean, I would move that we, you know, adopt this recommended staff report, and we'll keep getting updates from you as we move forward.
And I just, one follow-up question, Justin. On the Ravenswood Great Separation Project, I was just reading the third quarter update earlier today. I was asking, I'm assuming that the application, we aren't missing any queue with the county, right? I mean, we're still on track to get at least that forward. I know we're waiting to get back specifications on possibly some other alternatives, but the, but it, we're not, we're still getting that submission into the queue with the county, correct?
Yeah, so the, the key component will be the completion of the project study report, and then it would be a matter of calls for projects. So right now, there's not necessarily the funding for the projects, but there's nothing that I'm aware of right now that's, is affecting our, our place in line. But as additional time goes by, then, then things could change.
That's what I'm trying to ask. Thank you. Okay, great. I appreciate that. So I too concur with, I mean, appreciate that, that staff, you know, hard work to try and prioritize this. I also do, do know that, that we've been talking about some ideas and ways to help in terms of potentially recruiting and bringing, hiring, so, and that we will be seeing in some future meetings. Because obviously, the, the capacity issue is the biggest constraint that we have right now on our ability to get projects done. So we got to address the capacity issue. We've got to get the hiring and figure out how to, how to get quality, you know, folks like we currently have on staff and be able to, to add to that. So... So just want to make sure to, you know, folks in the audience are wondering, what are we doing about, about that? Yes, the staff is working on that. We'll be seeing that in, in the upcoming meetings on that. Okay?
Just one question.
Yes.
Alex, I know you and I spoke about, you know, staffing issues. Well, everybody has. But one of the questions I have, you know, I know housing is a huge impediment for people coming here, the price of housing. And is there any way to start looking maybe outside the traditional scope of finding employees to, you know, perhaps?
So, yes. I mean, I think some of the, the traditional manners that we recruit people, we hire executive recruiters for particularly executive-level staffing or management-level staffing. We use as much of the social media tools that are available to us. We do traditional advertising and whatnot. And I think one of the, well, I think one of the interesting conversations that you and I did have was this idea of, is there local talent on the private side who might find themselves with skills and abilities to be able to step in to maybe help us through, say, some certain project management type of activities? Perhaps somebody who's a stay-at-home mom or dad, for example, who has the skill set, who might have some time to come in and work. So it's like dividing a job into two, like a job-sharing concept. So those are ideas we haven't pursued yet, but those are the kinds of things we could look at, particularly if somebody comes in and talks about certain skills they have. As the council's aware, we have picked up two former public, two retired public works directors who are coming to help us piecemeal with certain projects. And they sort of showed up out of the woodwork, and I don't mean that disrespectfully to them, but they've, they've come forward to offer their services as local residents. So if there's other talent in the community that has time on their hands that would be willing to come and help us out, and they need to have the skills and the abilities to do the job, of course. So yes, we are open to all ideas at this point.
Yes, we are. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So are you looking for the, yeah, it does say, "Adopt updated city council work plans." So do we have a motion? Okay. Motion, Kirsten, Councilmember Keith, in motion. Councilmember Carlton, seconded. Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, moving now to item H3. And provide direction on the response to the San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report. Soaring city pension costs, time for hard choices. We have Finance and Budget Manager Dan Jacobson will present the report while he's coming up and getting that queued. I'll just mention that this was an item that was on the consent agenda in the last meeting. And I know that Vice Mayor Mueller had wanted to place this on the agenda so that we could go sort of, and I concurred with it, about going through step by step through some of the different responses to make sure we, we get a, we're able to do a thorough, you know, response back. So Dan, very much appreciate your, your being here tonight and putting together the presentation. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. As Peter, as Mayor Taki mentioned, talking about pension costs today, on the agenda, just for the benefit of the audience and to do a background, we'll talk about the Grand Jury Report, do a quick CalPERS overview so that we understand some of the concepts, go over some of the actions already taken by both the voters and the city council, future projections, and then go through each of the findings and recommendations so that you can provide additional direction. So again, the, the background here is that the San Mateo County Grand Jury released a report on July 17th. It contained 13 findings and four recommendations. And the city is required to respond to that with a letter approved at a public meeting by October 16th. For CalPERS, we contract with them for our defined benefit plan for our regular city employees, both the city and the employees. Both the city and the employees contribute toward their retirement. The city and the employees both pay a fixed amount toward the future benefits. That's considered the normal cost, a term that will come up later. And the city pays any unfunded accrued liability for previously earned benefits. So, this is a result of changes in returns and previous contributions, or in some cases, changes in formula, though that can't happen in the future. These amounts are calculated at each valuation depending on those returns, and there are multiple ways to pay, with the smallest amount being a minimum monthly contribution, and those amounts are set at the beginning of each fiscal year. For the current fiscal year, the required UAL amounts are 2.2 million for miscellaneous employees and 1.4 million for safety employees. Going into the future, the four-year outlook for the UAL, these are the projected required contributions. Again, these are variable amounts depending on the actual returns and actions taken by the city. They start out in the 4.3 million per year in 1920 and go up to 5.0, 6.0 million in 2223. As a percentage of payroll that is increasing over this time span, it does continue to increase a little bit after this window, at which point it levels off for a few years and then starts to reduce according to the current experience that has happened, though again, it is variable and can change. Just as a view of why the UAL changes, these are the CalPERS returns over the past 11 years. As you can see, they're extremely, there's a lot of variability here. So, as there are losses or gains that are different from the actuarial assumption, the green bar there, there is a UAL that is created, or there is a UAL which can be created, or an actual gain that can be created and offset some UAL. So, going over the actions that the city or voters have already taken, one major one was funding the other post-employment benefits in 2008. So, these are not actual pension benefits, but they are requirements the city must pay. So, they could potentially crowd out payments which could be made toward pensions. So, these are related to future healthcare, retirement healthcare for eligible employees that is no longer available, but this OPEB is fully funded. The Safety Side Fund was paid off in 2011. That reduced the interest payment requirements by 2.2 million dollars. That was the estimate at the time. There are multiple classic retirement tiers. So, classic new hires joining the city have reduced pension costs as a result of implementing multiple tiers. And the city shares a portion of the employer pension payments with the employees. So, for miscellaneous employees, 50% of the cost above a certain threshold is shared with the employees. That depends on the bargaining unit. For classic safety members, they pay an additional 3% member contribution, which reduces the city's cost. And then, as a result of PEPRA, those members pay a half of the normal cost. In addition, the city has a general fund strategic pension reserve policy, which dedicates 25% of the annual operating surplus toward strategic pending funding, strategic pension funding opportunities. And finally, as a result of the mayor's request and working with the Finance and Audit Committee, future projected UAL was included in the long-range budget forecast. That's been done for several years. It has been included in this year's budget as well. And then, just as an overview of the levers that the city has control over, there is employee cost sharing, there's the use of the strategic pension reserve. So, while that money is set aside and earmarked for pensions, it is not dedicated until it, it is not actually used until it's moved somewhere else. Options are the establishment of the Section 115 Trust Fund, which is an irrevocable trust, or prepayments to CalPERS ahead of the schedule that CalPERS sets out. And this can be done in a variety of ways, such as one-time or ongoing payments, such as targeting a funded percentage, for instance, 80%. The city has the opportunity to change the amortization schedule. So, all of the UAL that were presented earlier are a result of the current amortization schedule. Those are 30-year bases. The city has the opportunity to change the amortization schedule to a shorter period, but that is also irrevocable. So, if the city does that, there's no opportunity to go back to a 30-year base. And then, finally, as mentioned in the report, the city could pursue revenue measures to increase the amount of money that it raises and potentially put that toward pension costs. So, at this point, I've created, or I've included a slide for each of the findings and each of the recommendations. The first 10 findings are extremely factual and based mostly on CAFERS and budgets that were presented, so I don't believe that there is much additional nuance necessary. So, I would like to skip through those, but I would like to highlight some of the later findings and then the recommendations. These findings are all included in the letter, which was attached to the staff report as a draft and was on the August 28th meeting agenda as well. So, I'm going to skip to finding 11 and go over that one. And at the end of all the findings, we are, again, seeking direction on additional nuances or changes that should be included to each of these findings and recommendations. So, finding 11, this, the finding of the grand jury was that the increasing unfunded liability cost presented the opportunity to impair the city's ability to provide services. As I mentioned earlier, the city has included a long-term, or a long-range financial forecast in the budget over the past years and did this year as well. In this budget, or in this forecast, if you'll recall from the budget presentations, there is not an expectation that we will at any point be unable to provide services, that there will be insecurity to employee salary or pension benefits, or that there needs to be an increase in revenue raising measures beyond those which are normal, such as cost sharing. And the end of that, the city does agree that the nominal amount paid would be lower by paying the unfunded liabilities early. That is not a value judgment on whether that would be the correct choice or not. For finding 12, the grand jury found that no city had adopted a long-term financial plan with a number of items as listed. While the city does agree with that, the disagreement here is that these factors should be considered independently from a holistic long-term financial plan, which is how the city approaches budgeting. For finding 13, the major nuance here is that the city does find that pension costs will increase, but it, the finding does not adequately point out that the city of Menlo Park has done a number of measures to mitigate those increasing costs, and that's what this response attempts to highlight as currently written. Moving on to the recommendations, the first recommendation is fairly straightforward. It involves holding public hearings and developing a long-term plan. This is the longest draft response that the city has, in that it has not fully implemented this, but it does intend to implement what the recommendation is with the additional amount of, including the actuarial report, and that has been scheduled for November 13th. So, we don't have additional information yet, but Bartell and Associates, the city's independent actuary, will present on the most recent CalPERS valuation at that time. Again, in this, the language includes all of the measures that the city has taken, and while there are some changes in the language on the current slide from what was in the staff report, that is just to incorporate that the city has made moves to strategically use its money, paying off the Safety Side Fund, as well as the payment of OPEB so that it is fully funded. The final recommendation, or the second recommendation is not terribly different from the second recommendation, or from the first recommendation. The city's response to this really hinges on the city's response to the first recommendation, and that is pending additional information from the city's independent actuary. The third recommendation, and this one's on two slides because it is fairly substantial. The response is that the city hasn't, has not yet implemented this one, again, referring back to response one due to the comprehensiveness of the first response and the dependency on the city's independent actuary. And then, the final recommendation is related to a long-term financial plan. It outlines a number of items, and the city's draft response at this point is that it is partially implemented. That is, the long-range forecast that's included in the budgeting process has already been implemented. It will fully implement the remaining portions in next year's budget, by next year's budget process. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you have. And again, I've included each of the findings and recommendations on an individual slide, so please tell me which slide you'd like to go back to, and we can add in nuance and take your direction on those.
Great, thank you, Dan. Let me first see if we have any public comment on this. Okay, all right. So, I'll get into, I'm actually going to switch back screens and have you go back to F11. So, what I think they're trying to say in their findings is taking the, sorry, let me move this closer, is to look at the total amount of unfunded liabilities, and I think they're saying is trying to, in effect, not necessarily amortize it over a shorter period, but pay it down over a shorter period than 30 years, which is, which is, I think, what they're trying to do, as well as also paying down unfunded liabilities early results in large savings. So, I wanted to tweak our response in a couple ways. So, first of all, the city included unfunded liabilities in its 10-year forecast. Actually, we included increasing CalPERS rates, which in turn are based on the 30-year amortization. That is definitely in our 10-year forecast. We did not, and I don't want, if we put unfunded liabilities, that looks like we might have put in our 10-year forecast an accelerated paydown, and I don't, that was not part of, we did factor in the 10-year forecast increasing CalPERS rates. And it does not anticipate any, you know, and as I remember from our budget discussion, we're able to cover that. But I think I would suggest we change that maybe to clarify that. The other thing is, I do think we should state here that we paid down 7 million of the Safety Side Fund in 2011, which resulted in, I know it was at least 2.2, I thought it was like 4.3 million of interest, interest savings, expense savings. But I think we should state that in here even though we stated elsewhere because it addresses us paying down unfunded liabilities. So, we said, yeah, we've already, we did it once. We also did OPEB. The previous council did OPEB. We have also set up a reserve, but we're analyzing whether additional paydowns or setting up a Section 215 reserve makes the most sense. And I think that is, I know Finance Audit Committee last year, we talked about a Section, you know, 115. And so, when we talk to Bartell and Associates, I think that's certainly a discussion we will, we will have. So, I do think that would add some detail and show the grand jury that, yeah, we've been looking at this, and we've done the paydown. It worked great for the side fund. It may or may not work as well for the ongoing amortization, but that's what we're analyzing in a nutshell. So, I would recommend, and yes, it does make our answer longer, but I think, I think it's an important, important thing to make sure that the grand jury knows. Next, let's see. I think I'm fine with F12 and F13 on R1. I think our response is good. R3. So, two of those items under R3, we have, we have implemented. And so, I think that's worth mentioning in here. So, establishing substantial reserves that can be applied in the future to help meet rising pension costs and/or accelerate amortization of unfunded liabilities. We've set up the 2.3 million strategic pension fund. And then, another item recommendation further down under R3 says negotiating cost-sharing agreements with employees, which, under which employees pay a portion of the city's pension costs. And I think that's something that we've implemented. So, I think that's worth, and I think you have, as previously mentioned, the city has implemented a number of available options, but I would mention those just to be specific that let them know that we're on that. And then, the final, the final addition, and I'm not sure where it would best be put, but it was a suggestion that came up in the Finance Audit Committee meeting earlier this week, which is, is perhaps to suggest to the grand jury that many of the cities lobby CalPERS to implement a defined contribution, you know, plan. That is in the report, in the grand jury report, and basically says there's not a whole lot that the cities can do about that currently because it's not offered by CalPERS and you, and CalPERS requires that essentially you're all in or you're not, right? So, you have to only offer the plans that CalPERS provides, or you have to pay a dramatically huge amount, which is the entire future obligations now to get out of it. So, you're basically stuck with the plans that they have, and they have not offered basically a 401K-type plan. So, so where, I think that might be a helpful suggestion to the grand jury that, you know, they, they can encourage the cities potentially to, to request that of CalPERS. So, how, wherever you think that might make sense in there, but I would, I would suggest that, and I thought that was a good suggestion.
We could probably add that in a closing paragraph, sort of as a non, related but non, not specifically related to the four, or four recommendations that are before them. We can, we can add a paragraph to that extent.
Yeah, that would be, that would be great. And I think that's all that I had. If the, I don't know if my colleagues have any other comments. Council member Keith?
Thank you, Mayor Taki. Thank you for your presentation tonight, and I appreciate what Mayor Taki brought up, and I think those are good suggestions. And then, I'd also like to make a suggestion on response one. And I know in the beginning on R1, the response, you say the city has not yet implemented. But then, the next sentence starts, the city has a past practice of retaining. Could we not just start with that sentence? Because that's, we do do that. And so, it's not that we haven't implemented, but we are doing that. And then, to also put in here, we are having a meeting with our actuary November 13th, 2018, and just put it in there.
So, the grand jury does require that responses follow a certain form, so that is why it was, has not yet implemented.
But do you, could we put something in to say so they, otherwise, it looks like they don't know that we're actually going to do it November 13th, and I think that should be in there.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, then, I don't understand why you have to say this city has not yet. I mean, can't you just say the city is implementing this on November 13th? And we, and we've been doing this as a past practice?
So, again, that's the, the grand jury does require all responses to follow a certain form, and this, that's the form specified in the response, is that it either has implemented, has not yet implemented, or will not implement.
What about, or will be implementing?
We'll certainly look into whether that's, whether we can say will implement as opposed to has not yet implemented.
Yeah, I'd like to put it in the positive, not the...
And definitely, we will include the date that the actuary will...
What was that?
And we'll definitely include the date that the actuary will return for this.
Yeah, I think that's important. And then, looking at, you know, further development of a strategic long-term financial plan. And then, you go to R4, and they put in there the specific things that they're looking for. So, I'm assuming that we're giving that to, I'm going to ask you, we're giving all this information to our actuary so that when he or she comes on the 13th of November, these will be the responses that will be answered, or the questions that will be answered.
I'm afraid I don't quite understand, under recommendation four...
So, my question is, can you give, make sure that our, whoever's coming to speak with us on November 13th has these specific questions under R4 where it says such a plan should include, and it's got one, two, three, four, five bullets?
Yes, absolutely. We'll make sure that the actuary has all of our information and has different alternatives for what our options are.
And then, to specifically address this, I would like these... And then to specifically address this, I would like these specific questions answered --
Okay.
--when this, whoever comes, because I think it's important. This is part of what we need to do, and I want, I'd like to have, I want to make sure that they have an awareness that these are the questions we're going to have.
Absolutely.
Okay. So they don't have to take a month and respond to us. All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Keith. Councilmember Carlton?
I think you two covered it. I was, I had the same comment about R1, the fact that we're in the process of doing that, and the things that we've already prepaid, and we've, the only thing that I didn't hear you say was that the bucket that we put in to save, which I guess is--
The strategic pension reserve.
The strategic pension reserve, yes. Everything else, I think, is covered. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, I think, I don't see any other follow-ups. Thank you, Dan. Very much appreciate. Did you get the guidance and info--
Mr. Mayor, do you want us to go ahead and finalize the letter? So the council needs to approve the letter. Do you want to see it one more time, or do you want us to go ahead and have this be the final hearing, and then you will sign?
I think this is--
So the council then needs to take action to approve the response as amended, or with the suggested amendments?
Yes.
Can we see, can we hear back the amendments to make sure that we know what we're voting on?
Sure.
Yes, so that is to delineate each of the changes in F11, Finding 11, Recommendation 1 and Recommendation 4, to change will implement as opposed to has not yet implemented.
Will implement with the dates.
Will implement with the date. And then to also add a final closing paragraph, which is the Finance and Audit Committee's recommendation that the grand jury suggests changes to CalPERS.
I'm fine to not have this come back in light of the staffing shortages we have, and we just need to--
Yeah, and there are changes to F11 in response, correct?
Correct, yes. So F11 should delineate everything that is included in Response 1, as well as the actual amounts included--
Okay.
--which were not included.
But is talking about that we paid down the side fund and--
Correct.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to make sure that that was, that was covered. Okay. All right, so I guess there is a, we need a motion to approve as amended. Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry, I haven't shifted over to that, back to the screen. So Councilmember Carlton made the motion. Councilmember Keith seconded. Let's vote.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our final regular agenda item for this evening is Item H4, Provide Direction on Updated Travel Policy. And, let's see, City Attorney Bill McClure will present the report.
I'm happy to do that. So this came at the request of Councilmembers Klein and Mueller, that the council consider reviewing and updating the city's travel policy. So what we did is we went back and looked at the existing travel policy, which had not been updated since March 12th of 1991, which applies to both city council members as well as to other city employees, including the city manager, city attorney, and other staff. So state law authorizes city council members to be reimbursed for travel, meals, lodging, and other actual and necessary expenses. But in order to do so, the council must have a written policy adopted at a public meeting that determines how those expenses are reimbursed. So policies vary from city to city. Essentially, most all of the city's policies that we reviewed apply only to city reimbursed travel. Found few, if any, policies that related to non-city reimbursed travel policy. As of this time, there was no specific direction on dealing with non-city reimbursed travel policies. So we looked over the existing policy. We have rewritten the policy based on, you know, a model policy put out by ILG and that would regulate, again, both city council and staff reimbursement of travel expenses. So travel paid, there are some state laws and rules applying to travel paid by third parties, and essentially there are gift limitations. Travel that qualifies as a gift is limited to $470 from a single source in a calendar year. Gifts in excess of $50 have to be reported on the annual reporting Form 700. Certain types of travel payments, however, are not considered gifts. Again, third-party payments. So travel from a non-reportable source is not required. Travel from government agency for training, sharing a ride with another official, certain travel from governmental agencies, or 501(c)(3) organizations, or comparable organizations. There are different restrictions that apply to those, but there are various state laws that apply to those. Travel for official agency business, so certain payments made to cover expenses, the actual expenses where there's no personal benefit, is not a gift. Travel can be paid by campaign contributions or campaign committees, does not qualify as a gift. And travel payments fulfilling terms of a contract, again, does not constitute a gift. We did not incorporate those specific regulations into this travel policy. You know, we could repeat the state law provisions if desired by the council into the travel policy. The, so, the updated travel policy recognizes six areas where reimbursement will typically be permitted. Communicating with representatives of regional, state, federal government on city-adopted policy positions. Attending educational seminars designed to improve an official or employee's skill and information levels. Participating in regional, state, and/or national organizations, like the League of California Cities. Recognizing service to the city, for example, thanking a long-term employee with a celebration of nominal value and cost. Attending city events. Implementing a city council-approved strategy for attracting or retaining businesses to the city. And those are the types of authorized expenses for reimbursement. Expenses not falling within those categories would require prior approval. Likewise, any international travel or expense reimbursement exceeding $2,000 per trip would require prior approval. So if that is, if it's council travel, international travel that is reimbursed, or the cost exceeds $2,000, it has to be approved by the city council. Staff travel would be approved by the city manager. The updated policy expressly disallows reimbursement for the following activities: the personal portion of any trip, political or charitable contributions or events, family or guest expenses, including partners' expenses when accompanying a city official or employee on agency-related business, as well as children or pet-related expenses. It also does not provide for entertainment expenses, including theater movies, you know, whether in-room or in-theater sporting events, including gym, massage, golf-related expenses, or other cultural events. Does not provide for non-mileage personal automobile expenses. Does not cover repairs, traffic citations, insurance, gasoline. And does not include personal losses incurred while on city business. These align with the ILG model policy. The process for approval of travel, as I stated, the attendance by city officials, city council, city manager, city attorney, and other city council-designated officials, such as commission and committee members, at conferences, seminars shall be subject to prior approval of the city council. That has been and would continue to be typically done within the city's budget. For city employees, travel must be approved by the city manager. And as I said, any international travel or travel exceeding the city council-adopted budget must be approved in advance by a majority of the city council at a public meeting. The updated policy does incorporate state law requirement that a city council member shall provide a brief report on the meeting, conference, at the first city council meeting following the attendance of a reimbursable meeting or conference, which means that if the city has paid for attendance at National League meeting or League of California Cities, city council member is required to report out at the next meeting under council business. Other related travel policy issues, so as I said, the city's current travel policy, nor the updated draft policy, addresses issues such as travel paid by individual city council members or other third parties, city council members' representation of the city at invited events, and sister city travel expenses. The city, again, council has not provided any direction on these matters. It's really up to the city council whether it wishes to address any of those matters. With respect to travel paid by third parties, if directed by the council, we can include the state law restrictions, prohibitions, on third-party paid travel, gift limitations, and those things. They're not included in the policy today because, again, there are state laws regulating those items. But if you think it would be helpful to include it in the policy, we can certainly do that. Question about representing the city at invited events, you know, has come up, and this, again, there is no specific policy in our travel policy. We have some kind of indirect references in the city council procedures manual regarding speaking for the city, when and how to speak for the city. Again, we have not made any recommendations with respect to any of those policies or procedures, as those are really city council policies for its own conduct, that it, we'd either need some direction if you want us to investigate or draft anything, but it's, again, it's up to the city council. Lastly, sister city travel. Past practice has been that the city does not reimburse city council members' travel for sister city travel, but does reimburse for staff travel if approved in advance by the city council. The city council authorized a one-time city expenditure for an employee to chaperone, a delegation of Menlo Park students this summer to be zen Japan. The city council indicated that it did not establish a specific policy for that. If it wants to, again, the city council could establish a policy for how and when, and make decisions about sister city travel, or could do it on an ad hoc basis as it has done, or as it did this year. So there is a resolution that is attached to the staff report for the adoption of updated travel policy relating to council and staff reimbursed travel. Happy to answer any questions?
Okay, thank you, Bill. And thank you for answering one question which I had, which was regarding sister city travel. Appreciate that. Before we go to our public speaker, Mr. Fisher, I did want to ask you about, if we wanted to, one practice that we all have used whenever, you know, we go, whenever we've all gone, you know, overseas, or even, we don't sign anything, you know, without essentially pre-clearance or pre-vetting by the, that hasn't previously been approved by the city council before we go. And I didn't see that in here. Is that something that we, I mean, I think we should take the opportunity to, you know, put it in and, you know, just make sure that it's, that it's in there. We all have adhered to that. I think it's, and I think that should now be part of it. Bill, your thoughts on--
It certainly could be in here as part of this policy, or does that belong in the procedures manual in terms of the section relates to basically representing the city, speaking for the city? So we have, you know, we do, we have, because I'm not sure it is different for when you're traveling, or even if you're here someplace in the state of California, or even appearing at some, you know, event. What authority do council members have to speak for the city? And so it is, you know, we have city council, we have a section, Chapter 4, of the procedures manual for the Menlo Park City Council, talks about city council communications, what the role is, council member correspondence, you know, stating positions, and then speaking for the city. And it may be that, you know, the council wants to review those sections of the policy and potentially update that policy a little bit more.
Yeah, or we could refer to it correctly in this--
Certainly.
--make sure that that's referenced, and then, and then review that specific policy as well. Okay, all right, so you've given me an idea on that. Any other clarification questions before we go to public comment?
No, I think that was a good one, and I think it's important that we, to note that we all have adhered to that. Nobody's ever signed anything abroad.
Okay, great. All right, so we have George Fisher with time donated by Steve Schmidt and Lynn Bramlett, followed by Pamela Jones, so. George, good evening, and I'll let you--
I'd like to--
And if you get a chance, move that microphone when you're in position.
Thank you, Mayor Otaki. I would like to follow up on what Mr. McClure said, because I think what is essentially missing from the city policy is exactly that, a city council policy for its own conduct. There is no such thing. The ethics, you need ethics to have as part of your conduct, and you need various other things, such as what Ms. Bramlett's been talking about. The questions of not signing things while you're abroad, and the question of speaking for the city, have shown up to be very ambiguous in the travels that you've taken. And I think the need for your conduct when deciding to go on a trip, and particularly when you're getting reimbursed, because under the Fair Political Practices Act, you have a personal interest in accepting travel. Now, Councilmembers Carlton and Keith, in a two-year period, had reimbursement of over $40,000, seven or eight trips, seven trips, I think, in 2015 and '16. Those are big personal advantages. And on those trips, there were agreements signed, people speaking for the city. And this all came to light this year, in 2018, with Councilmember Keith's trip to China, which has been in the news. And this one particularly illustrated-- And this one particularly illustrates what I think the problem is. It's a, I've, can you see this?
Okay, you've got that one.
I'm trying to do this for the camera and this for the crowd. But this is a picture of a signing event in Chengdu. And it is put out by the state party work department of the People's Republic of China, I believe. This is Chinese national government publicity. And they had scheduled this event for the same day as a council planning commission study session on Facebook Village here. Councilmember Keith went to China to participate in this ceremony. And here's, I can tell, that's the only thing that happened on that trip, other than a trip to the Giant Panda Farm, or breeding ground, whatever it is, to see that, to take her daughter there, and to attend a meeting, a dinner meeting, actually, with representatives of the Chinese PRC, Mrs. Liu, who's the sister of one of five, there are only five deputy premiers of the whole country. And this had to do with an industrial park, Chengdu High Tech Development, that is owned and run by China. And that development, that park, wants very much to have a connection with Silicon Valley. And in fact, a number of places in China want to have connections with Silicon Valley. And they have formed organizations that run each year what they call Silicon Valley Mayor's Groups, Clusters, whatever, to take Silicon Valley mayors to China and get them to sign various things, and promote the connection between China and Silicon Valley. If you go on the web, you'll see, and just put in Google China, Silicon Valley, and you'll see how strong there is an interest in China to connect with Silicon Valley. They've chosen a way to develop that affiliation with mayors. Mayors aren't businessmen. Mayors are local politicians. But they get them to come over and participate and make connections for them. One of the connections is this, here, it's a little bit off. This signing of a memorandum of understanding. And in this signing, you'll see on the background here, the top is the HIM group, which is, I believe, something to do with Michael Casper's Act of Mountain View, who invited, I believe, Councilmember Keith. That's what's in the paper, anyway. The center section is the Chengdu High Tech Administrative Conference people. And the last one is the Silicon Valley City Group. Now, that is an amorphous thing, but it arises out of each year's trips by the Silicon Valley Mayor's Groups, which have been in 2015, 16, and 17. Now, if you look at below here, this was the publicity in many worldwide places, that this memorandum of understanding, in the bottom part of the yellow, where Chengdu High Tech Zone, Silicon Valley City Group, Dublin, Mountain View, Menlo Park, and Silicon Valley Management Consulting Company, signed a memorandum of understanding on cooperation, and the three parties intend to build, intend to cooperate to build the Chengdu Silicon Valley Finance Center. Now, that finance center is going to have headquarters both in Chengdu and in Silicon Valley. The publicity that goes on, it's on several international websites at the time of this signing ceremony, says that that technology center will operate as a limited liability company with footprints both in Chengdu and Silicon Valley. HIM group, it says, is going to partner with Silicon Valley City Cluster to invest $30 million for the establishment of the Chengdu Silicon Valley Technology and Finance Center within the Chengdu area, and a smaller one of 1,000 square meters, I think 10,000 feet here. This finance center consists of three primary business units. Chengdu Silicon Valley Technology Transfer Center, a financial services center, and a free trade zone. The Technology Transfer Center is there to transfer technology from Silicon Valley to China, which is a red flag country, which has, is trying, has out and out stolen a lot of intellectual property, and that's what it likes to do. And what they want to do is they want to select exceptional products to provide, to a platform to introduce high-tech projects to Chengdu while accelerating such projects from Silicon Valley. The center will maximize the potential role of incubator for firms in Silicon Valley and accelerator for firms in China. Now, my understanding, incubator are kind of small startups like we have, accelerators when you need to get things going and start mass producing, where you need people and whatnot. China wants that work, and they can use it to take technology. There's been articles in the paper about the FBI concerned about China in this area. And they've actually been worried about some, and contacting local mayors they worried about. The disheartened reason in the papers was because they may be future politicians. I'm personally familiar with a, I was appointed by the district court to handle a corporation that was founded by both Chinese nationals and American nationals. It had to do with a claim of selling radar detectors to the 12th Institute, which may be the Chinese Army. The Chinese nationals all left. I was left with the responsibility to handle a criminal case against the corporation and to sell the technology. We did plead guilty once I found out the receiver can't be thrown in jail. And I sold the technology after a long process of vetting, court approvals, and whatever. Three years later, they came back, Homeland Security called me, the FBI, to come down and find out more about the people I've been sold to, and it was a continued interest, as they apparently have the same problem. This is not something to be taken lightly. What does Menlo Park have to do in signing all these things? Is my 10 minutes up, or is that three?
I think your time is up, but you can summarize for.
10 minutes? 9 minutes? Okay, so I summarize by saying that in East Palo Alto, in 192015, got home approval by telephone from Lisa Gaudier, the mayor. She brought in and had approved while she was in China with Ms. Carlton, and had approved three agreements for them to sign. And the city council by special session approved them. One of the signatories of those units was Ms. Carlton. I don't think those ever even came here. Their name is on there, you can see in the, in the East Palo Alto City Minutes. So what we need is some way to establish, a way to balance self-interest from going over and being manipulated by somebody else. That's what needs to happen. How can you not?
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Good evening again, Pamela Jones. I want to thank you for bringing this matter up for a discussion. I think it's really important for all of us, the public, to understand what the dynamics are around a travel policy. And I'll bet you, you were surprised as everybody else when you found out how long it's been since it had been written. And it's usually how these things happen. I would like to ask you, though, to table it for tonight, because there's only the three of you here. I think it should be a full council to have a full, dynamic, robust discussion, and then followed by a vote. Thank you.
All right, Pamela, thank you.
Did too late to put it in?
Yes, George, you're, go, no, you can come up, you can, just hand your card to Judy. We hadn't quite finished, so, go ahead.
Councilmembers and mayor, I personally do a lot of travel, and I understand that for city council members, they are not full-time politicians. You do have young jobs to travel. I just come back from a trip to Macau, which is a blockchain conference that's completely unrelated to my duty as sister city commissioner. And I do understand that we want to have good people working for the city, and some of those good people sometimes do travel globally. So I do understand Mr. Fisher's concern. They are specific to this case in Chengdu. But whether or not that was paid for by the city or paid for by the person traveling, I think that's not the main issue that Mr. Fisher is concerned about. It's more concerned about the national security aspect of it, which I agree with. So I just want to make sure that when we do have this policy, we want to make it in such a way that do not discourage people who have real careers from participating in our city council community activities. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, George. All right. We'll come back up here. Let me see if there, while we're, Bill, let me go back to you with, you had mentioned that there is the other policy. Can you restate that summary that, again, and to clarify, I think you had mentioned the communications policy, or it's the other?
Yeah, so, you know, when you look back at documents that have been done a long time ago, the, and I can't remember when the procedures manual was originally adopted, but, you know, it, there's a chapter four on city council communications, and it talks about the, you know, the role of council members in communications, and how the city council performs as a body as opposed to individuals. And then, you know, it says it's important that general guidelines be understood when speaking as a council member, you know, equally important when members are expressing personal views and not those of the council, the public should be so advised. So it talks about kind of what the conduct is for council members when they're speaking for the council as a whole, or speaking as individuals. And so, and then it jumps into correspondence, and, you know, council members being called upon to write letters to citizens' businesses or other agencies, and then it says typically, the mayor will be charged with transmitting the city's position on policy matters to outside agencies. I'm kind of abbreviating, I'm not reading word for word. Correspondence sent on behalf of the city council is placed on official city letterhead, signed by the mayor or city manager. Individual members of the city may prepare letters to constituents in response to inquiries or provide requested information. Individualized council member letterhead can be made available for this purpose, you know, so it's talking about trying to differentiate between council business and individuals, bless you. And then, you know, on occasion, members may wish to transmit correspondence on an issue upon which the city council has yet to take a position, or about an issue for which the city council has no position. In these circumstances, members should use their personalized letterhead, clearly indicate within the letters they are not speaking for the city council as a whole, but for themselves as one member of the council. And then where a position has been taken, the official correspondence should reflect the position. And then, and so then there's this section on speaking for the city, which follows that, you know, kind of thought. And here's where it may not be written maybe as clearly as, as one would, but it's also, a lot of this kind of was done by committee, you know, everybody gets their words in. So it says that similar to written correspondence, when members are requested to speak, to groups or asked by the city council's position on an issue, the response should reflect, excuse me, the position of the city council as a whole. You know, of course, a council member can clarify their vote on a matter by stating, for example, while I voted against X, the city council voted in support of it. When representing the city at meetings or other venues, it is important that those in attendance gain an understanding of the city council's position rather than that of an individual council member. And then it talks about media, and then, you know, various other things. But, you know, it, again, the council may want to revisit this, but one could, if you want to add a provision, you know, you could provide that, you know, city officials shall comply with the communications policy in the procedures manual for the city, the city council of Menlo Park, and, and deal with, you know, signing, et cetera. Because I'm not, again, I'm not sure that the issue is what someone is doing in a foreign venue as opposed to the overall, you know, council policy, if you will, on when they should sign anything for the city, whether it's here or someplace else, you know, what authority do they have? So the other thing is, I just do want to point out that in the, you know, in the policy, it does say that city funds, equipment, and titles, that includes the titles of city council members, and staff time must only be used for authorized city business. So whenever, you know, somebody is using their position or title, this, this policy does include that it needs to be for authorized city business.
Okay, Bill, and just one last thing before I go to Councilmember Keith. I wanted to ask our city manager, Alex, did you get any input from, you know, unfortunately, the two council members who, you know, certainly wanted to, agendized it, and certainly had concurred with that, are not here? Did they give you, did either of them give you any feedback to share with us?
Yeah, so I spoke with Councilmember Mueller, or Vice Mayor Mueller, earlier today, and he regrets not being here, but he also volunteered his services if the council forms a subcommittee to pursue crafting, whether it's the update to the communications language in the guide, in the council policies and procedures, or whether it's about the travel policy for council. He was just volunteering his, his time to do so.
Okay.
Or expressed an interest in.
Okay, got it. All right, Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Thank you to the speakers tonight, to George Fisher and to Pam. I just wanted to say a few things, that I appreciate your photographs, and I was invited to go, and I went. And I, and I think that, I want to clarify that when I've gone on these trips, I was invited to go in 2015 and in 2016. And that was after Vice Mayor Mueller had been, had gone, and when he was mayor. In fact, he was the first person to go to China when he was mayor. And I really appreciated the practice that he put into place of getting an FPPC letter. So I made sure that when I went to China, I always had an FPPC letter too, which I've provided to Kate, who's here tonight from the Almanac. And I think that's important. And I think one of the things we could add to the policy is to say, you know, get an FPPC letter, because I think that's very important to do, and it's very useful. And then when I have gone on, on trips, there have been other council members, either mayors, former mayors, council members from many cities, including Mountain View, Menlo Park, our city, Brisbane, Danville, Concord, Gilroy, Sunnyvale, Belmont, Half Moon Bay, Atherton, Arinda, Livermore, and probably some others that I didn't just write down. But the point that I'm trying to let you know is that when people are invited to go, it's usually a group that goes. And I know Councilmember Carlton has gone with a group as well, from, with people from East Palo Alto, Union City, and other cities, yeah, Redwood City. So many of the cities around here, there are people that are invited to go on these trips, and it's a goodwill trip, and you, do you meet people, and you, generally, what I've done is spoken very generally about Menlo Park, about the size of Menlo Park, you know, that we're 33,000 people, where we're located, give an idea about what is in our community, why it's such a great community to live in, and why we love it so much. And that's, that's what happens. So I'm, I understand, you know, that my, the trips that were specifically talked about were in 2015 and 16, and I understand that, you know, nobody cared about them then, but it's really important now. And so I'm glad that we're having these discussions. I'm glad that there are FPPC letters for all these trips, and that's really important. And I think, you know, in the other cities, when I've talked to council members in the other cities, this hasn't come up, actually. So it's really good that we have people in Menlo Park who are really concerned about it to bring it forward, to talk about, and I think that's good. I also do, like I said, I appreciate that Vice Mayor Mueller did implement that policy of really getting an FPPC letter to, to do these trips. Let's see. We could also add some sort of statement that, oh, also, George Fisher brought up that, well, you weren't here for a study session. I have a daughter in college at UC Davis, and I knew in advance that my daughter had her spring break. And if you have a daughter or a son in your life who loves to be with you still, I'm happy for you. I do. And my daughter wanted to spend spring break with me. And my daughter wanted to spend spring break with me, and I'm there for my daughter. So I had already planned I was going to be with my daughter for spring break, and then this opportunity came up and we incorporated it. But I was already planning on being with my own, my only daughter for her spring break after, during her junior year at UC Davis, and that's really important to me. Study sessions are important as well. Study sessions are very important, and luckily, we have many study sessions, and we can talk about projects, and we can talk about all sorts of things. And the most important thing are when we have city council meetings where we actually vote on projects. A study session is not a vote on a project. So I did choose to be with my only daughter on her spring break. She's a senior at UC Davis this year. She will be. They start up again on September 23rd or so. And I hope that everybody has that experience with their own children, too. So that was important to me. I want to make it really clear, I was never asked to sign any documents. I've never signed any documents. And no documents were presented to me to even look at or see. So I didn't know any, that was just not something that was, that I knew. So one thing I would say might be a good idea to add is to add something to the policy that states where whoever's inviting us, there would be a form letter prepared that would state, you know, "In order for us to attend, we need to know exactly what documents will be signed, by whom they're going to be signed, and all the people who will be at the different meetings." And I think that could be very helpful. I know for myself, when I went in 2015 and 16, we did go up to the embassy in San Francisco, and we met with the Chinese embassy people, and it was, they were excited to have us come and talk about Menlo Park and the other cities, the other 12 cities that I've mentioned, and to learn about what we're doing and we're learning from them as well, and it's part of being in the world today. In Chengdu, when we were in locations, we saw that the European Union is all over in that area. And so they're very active, and I think in this times of political strife in the world that it is important that we reach out to people all across this planet to form relationships and bonds. And so I just wanted to clarify a little of that. So I think it would be good to have some sort of form letter that lays out parameters so that when we are invited to these things, that we could give this form letter, and it will be useful for anybody in the future as well, that says certain things, and we can, we can figure that out. But I think it should definitely state any and all documents that might be signed, and we could say they must be translated into English. Because oftentimes, if, at a ceremonial event, you might have a document that is not in English and you don't have a translation of it, you're not signing it anyway. But there are, and probably Mr. Yang can attest to this, when you go to China, there are many times where there are opportunities where people are taking photographs at events. And it is, that is something very common, and probably people up here would be able to attest to that as well. So I think having some sort of form letter with some parameters so that our, whoever's inviting us knows what we need would be really useful for everybody.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Keith. Councilmember Carlton.
Councilmember Keith covered a lot of what I was going to say. That's fine. The policy on our own conduct, I think is good for us, exists, and is good for us to make reference to. There's a lot of reference to the IRS rates, in effect. I think that before we go on trips, those should be made clear to us before we go so that there's no confusion on what the IRS rates are and what the restrictions are and all that. I realize that in the policy, you say IRS rates because they may change year to year, and you don't want to write a solid number in there. But I want to make sure, like they did with the form letter, I also want to make sure that the rates and all the things are made clear. I don't know, January, when we do the budget setting, we put those in because I think they don't change within the year. I don't know the exact month that they're set, but I think that's a good thing for us to have available. I am happy to support this policy as it's put forward. I think it's fair and balanced, and I am happy to do that. As a general rule, I don't tend to claim all the expenses I incur going to all the League of City things that I do, as the city manager knows. So I feel very comfortable with this.
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. A couple of things. So these are more, let me get some of the smaller things that I wanted to make sure. So appreciate the new draft policy. I do think, what I did like about the old policy is it had a list of the different, I think it was Exhibit Eight, chart of conferences and meetings. I don't know if that was part of the old policy or whether that's just an appendix here to the staff report, but I would like that list to be included in the travel policy because it, and with a, with some sort of a reference, that these are definitely, you know, the types of conferences and meetings that, that are considered part of, you know, what a, what a city council member needs to attend. The, because I, you know, I, while I think the travel policy is good, is, but also adding some examples onto this would be, would be helpful, so showing that, you know, that the annual League of California Cities, you know, conference or the different, as we know, the Council of Cities has a monthly dinner where they have a speaker and a topic. So being able to show these, I think are useful to have as part of the policy. I know there's a couple of mayors' conferences as well. So I would, I would include a reference to this, this list and include the list there. I think that helps to, if there's any question, people can sort of, you know, in public can see, hey, yeah, this is part of what was intended with the.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? And Mr. Mayor, I assume you're referring to Exhibit Eight on the?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. So that list is a, is a, it's fine, the list is great. And is this, is this list meant to be limiting or examples of?
Examples of, not limiting. But I think the idea is trying to, trying to give this a little more guidance so it's easier for council members to understand, oh, yeah, that's something I can go to and, and understand that. I do think we need in this new travel policy, a discussion of sister cities, even if the discussion, I mean, we have it in the staff report, but I didn't actually see it in the policy itself, and.
Yeah, we were asking for policy direction. If you wanted to add it, and if so, should any sister city travel require council approval? Do you want to pre-approve? I mean, it's kind of, what do you want it to be?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think certainly if there's any, any city staff or, staff or city reimbursement involved, it should require the, particularly because it's overseas, it should require the advance approval of the city council, like we did, I mean, like we did when it came to Bezen. I think that's, that's the appropriate thing to do. Otherwise, if it's, if it's a city council member, and we've all done sister city trips on our own personal, you know, airfare, I don't think that, that requires it, but I think as policy, the city council should be informed in advance of an upcoming sister cities trip. I think that's just good form. So I would, I would recommend the addition of some explicit language, because I do think we want to encourage sister city relationships, right? And, and we've all, you know, we've all been part of establishing new sister, or I should say, and friendship cities, because there's that intermediate classification. We technically only have one formal sister city, and we have four, four friendship cities, correct? Three friendship cities. So, so it should apply to both friendship and sister cities. And then I do think if, if the communications policy didn't, and I didn't hear it having a explicit, you know, not to sign anything unless it's been pre-approved by the city council, if that's not in the communications policy, I think we need to just make it explicit. We've all followed that, and let's, let's make it. And that applies to either sister city travel or any, I think, other travel. I think that's, quite frankly, so I think it does make sense in the travel.
Yeah, I don't think anything should be signed without a council approval at all.
Correct, exactly.
No matter where you are, even if you're.
Right. Now, what I would recommend is that then we make these edit, or, you know, have an edited version of this. And then I would like to recommend that we see both this edited version of the travel policy and the communications policy, because I certainly think the communications policy may have this question about, you know, the question about, are you representing the city or not representing the city? Let's make sure we've got that, you know, review it, and we don't have it tonight. So I do think, and it sounds like it would make sense to have both come forward once we've had the edits done. And, and again, I don't know, you know, in our remaining sessions for this year before December, but I think that's, while I would certainly like to get Councilmember Vice Mayor Mueller and Councilmember Klein's input on the final version, I think that might be the best way to, to do that, but that may turn into be the next, part of the next council, too. But let's, let's see what their availability is.
Yeah, and then through the mayor.
Yes.
And just also, Bill, if you could draft something, a letter that would be utilized, a form letter for anybody who's going to travel, that includes certain things like what I was saying earlier, if there are any documents that will be signed, they need to be, by anybody, they need to be given to us in advance, and they need to be translated into English. And then whatever else you think should be in that form letter that we would be giving to whoever it was that was inviting us.
Yeah, I mean, I think we'd notify them that the council member or mayor, whoever's attending, or staff person, does not have any authority to execute any documents unless it has been approved in advance by the city council. So they had, you, you're traveling with that expectation. And then requesting all of that information in any event, we would like this, as well as who would be attending.
Yes.
So that you have that information.
I think anything that, that has a sort of public, I mean, it could be an itinerary, it could be a, you know, the public appearance itinerary, right? When there's, when the things, I think that's something that would be useful to request to make, you know, I think that, and that's true with sister city stuff as well. So I think that would be good as part of the form to request.
Okay, and then the, so I'm not quite clear on the FPPC letter, is that, so, so essentially...
I think the FPPC letter is applicable when, when it's not, when, when there's going to be an entity that is paying for the trip.
Third-party payer that's not clearly, well, I guess even if, I guess that's the question. There is an exemption for travel paid for a, by a 501(c)(3) organization. That's clearly exempt, doesn't need an FPPC letter. I think the question is when it's an or other type of organization that doesn't clearly fall within one of the exceptions, and that's why the FPPC letter was, was requested, and because it was being paid by a foreign organization or an affiliate of a foreign organization that was the equivalent of a 501(c)(3). And so the, the FPPC decision related to, it was the, effectively the equivalent and therefore qualified for the exemption, so.
I guess I'll chime in. I think it's important that whoever goes should request an FPPC letter. I mean, and that just need, that should be done, because that, that's important for the person who's going. It's, it's an important thing to get from the FPPC. So I think it's an advisable thing to do.
Right. Now, I mean, I think the travel policy covers, for example, if it's, if it's the city that's reimbursing.
You know, I think we're talking about third-party reimbursement.
It's third-party.
So what I'm hearing.
And it's not if you're, if we're doing personal, you know, paying for a sister city, you know, trip, I don't think that's, you don't need to go to the FPPC either.
Correct. Correct. It's, it's third-party.
Only if the.
Only if the FPPC, yeah.
Only if the FPPC requires it, then, then I would advise everybody to get an FPPC letter.
What do you mean, if the FPPC requires?
Well, there's, there are rules in the FPP, I mean, follow the FPPC rules, that's all.
Yes, so, okay. I mean, I, I'll draft some language, but what I'm hearing is you want language about third-party reimbursed expenses, and you want some rules in there about that, specifically the prohibitions, when it's not allowed, what is allowed, and then with a recommendation that people obtain an FPPC rule where the, where it is not totally clear that it's exempt.
Right.
Or that it's not a gift, if you will.
Yeah.
Right, and I do think it's important to see that communications policy, because that's the, that's the one where, you know, in terms of, you know, city business, not city business, how are you, you know, and I think that's an important guideline that I think we want to make sure we're, we're reviewing and make sure that that's current. And I think that might address some of this issue about, you know, press conference or not and things. So I think that would be very useful. So I think we've covered no signing anything. We've covered if it's paid by somebody else. And then we have a very good updated travel policy for basically state and state travel. So I definitely think we should move forward with those amendments. Councilmember Carlton?
I agree.
Okay.
I think that's good.
Okay, yes.
To that end, Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to have you adopt the policy you have in front of you today, which has nothing to do with any of this stuff? It's purely about reimbursable travel. We have a 27-year-old policy that we've been working on for a long time.
I'll move that.
And our fear is that this thing's going to delay and drag into the new year, and it's, the policy's ready to go to deal with our everyday travel that has nothing to do with international travel, has nothing to do with councils' authority to represent. That's all sort of a separate issue. This policy is tight and ready to go for, at the staff level? If it's something you would be comfortable adopting tonight? And then we can amend it when the city attorney brings it back to be amended?
Okay, yes, with the.
Does that make sense?
That it will be amended.
Yes.
But, but at least to get it started with it. I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And.
So the motion.
I have another question, too. Bill, I just want to confirm that no council members have ever signed anything abroad.
No, I'm not aware of any council members signing anything abroad. I do remember a call from Councilmember Carlton confirming that she could not, should not sign something that was put before her, because it was different than what the council had approved when, the council had approved a document before she left, and then she went on the trip, and she literally called me from wherever she was.
You, you sent me, you sent me rewording.
Yeah, and that would be consistent with what the council had approved.
Exactly.
Because it, they had totally changed the intent of it, and so we changed it back to what the council had approved, so that she could sign something, but it was pre-approved by the city council.
And I, and I did call when it was different and got approval from the city attorney.
So the, an appropriate motion, if you chose to do so, would be a motion to approve the resolution adopting the travel policy. And the second part of the motion would be directing the city attorney to return to the city council with both the travel policy with the various suggested revisions that the council discussed, dealing with, you know, the list of examples of types of travel. know, the list of examples of types of travel, a discussion of the sister city and friendship cities and requiring approval, the explicit language, either in the travel policy or in the council policy about needing explicit approval, no signing without a preapproval of the city council. And then in addition to that, dealing with third-party travel, the prohibitions, gift restrictions and limitations, adding in the FPPC letter approval piece and adding in provisions regarding creating a letter that would be attached to the policy to be used for, you know, foreign travel when asked to attend, indicating that without preapproval by the city council, no authority to sign, and including requests for who's going to attend and any other documents that they might be asked to attend as well as public appearances.
Wow, I'm impressed, Bill. No wonder you're getting that golden acorn.
Great. All right. Yes. Shall we vote? Yep.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right. Yes.
I know that we don't usually comment on information items, but I did have a comment on I-1, please.
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
We do have a public comment on I-1.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's okay.
Okay.
Take the public comment.
Shall we do that? Yes. Andrew? Oh, I did see him. Oh, he's outside. Andrew Boone, if you can hear me.
White courtesy telephone, please. Hi, Andrew. We're at the information item. Update on the Willow Road and Highway 101 interchange topic, and we understand that you wanted to speak on it, so.
Thank you, Mayor Otaki, for calling me. I, I'm glad to see the interchange being rebuilt. It's going to be better. The design was actually, it's one of the better interchanges we're going to end up with in the area with bike lanes on both sides, with sidewalks on both sides. But I want you and the community to understand a couple of things that are also going to happen. One thing is that the interchange was designed to carry more cars. I mean, that was the main driver to rebuild it, apart from safety, was traffic jams. The idea that if we build a bigger interchange or a interchange that's designed to fit more cars through it, that we're going to somehow reduce traffic. That's not going to happen. The opposite is going to happen. Since more cars can flow through the interchange and get off of the highway and go down Willow Road or vice versa, we're going to end up with more car traffic, something that you've discussed at length here at the council as a negative impact, what to do about it. There's traffic in the Willows neighborhood. It's because of this. Well, this is going to exacerbate that. And the other thing that we really need to do a better job of in the future is when we say, how much does something cost? And then the cost ends up four times higher, something didn't work there. I was at this council, there was more than one meeting where it was presented that the interchange would cost 20 to 30 million dollars. There, there was something like that, 25 million, 30 million. And it's 80 million. It's, it's way, way over what we were told, me, we, the public, were told right here, what this was going to cost and how much, how much taxpayer dollars it's going to take. And there doesn't seem to be any, you know, I, I brought this up to Joe Slavitt of the Transportation Authority. How can you be funding something that's triple what you said it was going to be? And then there's no discussion of that. There's just, oh, sorry. Sorry, we're spending 60 million dollars of your money that we said we weren't going to spend. You know, there's a problem. There's a problem in the process when a highway project is always lowballed. That's the problem. So we're lying to the public. We say we can rebuild this highway thing and it comes out triple the cost. I don't want to see that happen again in another place. I guess you're on the Menlo Park council. You can't decide what's happening elsewhere in the city, in the, than the city. But elsewhere in the county, this is the case. The TA is pushing highway expansions, is lowballing the cost, is deceiving the public about that cost. And whatever the costs are, we should be honest about them upfront. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. And I think we have a card from Cecilia Taylor.
Good evening, council. Cecilia Taylor, Menlo Park, Billhaven neighborhood. Along with the, the update, I just want to reiterate the concerns around the intersection that is before the Willow overpass, which is New Bridge and Willow Road. I invite everyone in this room to do a walk-through in the morning so that they can experience what the children do when they're walking to school. It is very dangerous and for some reason, there has not been added time for pedestrians to cross the street and they're competing with cars that are making right-hand turns and winding up being stuck in the street when the cars are coming from the other direction out of East Palo Alto. And so in the update, if we can please include pedestrian safety at New Bridge and Willow Road. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Cecilia. And I think that's a good suggestion. Councilmember Carlton?
Sure. First of all, I'm also really upset that the price is going up. In fact, it was one of the questions I asked the city manager this morning. Why is it in our work plan that we're having difficulty paying for these things when we had a budget that was set? And it's because the prices keep going up. That's, there are good things and bad things when you have an economy that's booming. Sometimes I think if we delay anymore, maybe they'll go back down again. But I'm also really frustrated by that. And, and that's why the delays frighten me in terms of our ability to make sure that we can actually get done what we, what we would like to get done. The thing I wanted to mention is that it was brought to my attention that it isn't really processing more cars. It's taking cars, the, the intersection is taking cars off of 101. So it's freeing up 101, but it's not necessarily processing more cars. In fact, potentially, it's processing fewer cars because it stacks them all up on the side. We discussed this ad nauseam when we were going through this, you will remember. And it was, in the end, decided that Mr. Lauder and the Caltrans people had explained that there was a way of doing the striping so that you have the single line striping going back much further than was initially planned to keep people that are going from Dunbarton from piling up both lanes and then switching over at the last minute so that you have a lane, they'll do it probably to some degree anyway, but at least it discourages them from stacking up in front of the people trying to get into, to the Willows, into West Menlo Park. And we'd all agreed that was a good idea. We discussed it. And yet it never got put into writing. And I found the old email, the old drawing. I had asked Gary Lauder if he could resend it to me. He did. I'll forward it on to you. It's one of those things that sometimes we talk about things during council, and I worry that it'll get forgotten unless it gets put into writing. So thank you very much for bringing us the update. It would be great if we could add this as maybe a addendum or something, that this is what was discussed and we thought it was a good idea.
Sure. So, so two, two things, because you, Councilmember Carlton, you and I talked about this this morning. I followed up with the transportation staff, and we have, we are working with Caltrans on doing just that, that not just the striping, but the collapsible bollards that would be, be put up to keep people from cutting in at the last minute. So the good news is, your idea is being discussed at the Caltrans level and they are, they're taking it under very serious consideration, is how staff explained it to me.
Great. I, I thank you for that. I really appreciate it. I just want to make sure that it gets written down somewhere because staff change, city council change, all kinds of things change through time. And I want to make sure that that doesn't get lost because it's important to make sure that we do have a, a flow of traffic, that people that live in the, the Willows or wherever they're going aren't unnecessarily burdened by this.
Okay. Councilmember Keith?
Thank you. Just a follow-up on the bollards discussion. Can we have them respond to us in writing with that they're, when they think that they'll be able to get that in there? Because with the new configuration change, that will be the final change.
And we can certainly ask them. Yes.
I know they're, you know, super responsive.
Yes.
And will be eager to do that for us. And also, in, when talking with them about the striping and the arrows for the lanes and things, it just, it wasn't done well the first time. And it was done okay the second time. But if they, if you can please, and I'm looking at Justin, too, reach out, I mean, maybe there should be a formal letter written that's signed by Alex that, that addresses this issue, but to make sure that they really put the correct lane configurations down, because it will be confusing again. But they need to have the correct lane configurations down, the bollards in place. And that's important. And then the other thing I've been asking you about a lot is a landscaping plan. And I see Mr. Murphy moving up to the podium. And maybe you have some information for us on those issues, the striping and the bollards and landscape?
Not necessarily. Happy to kind of acknowledge what you're requesting. We're, we're happy to, to try, as you kind of acknowledged that there's only so much that we, we can do.
Right.
But we, but we will try. And specific to landscaping, we are in the process of trying to coordinate people's calendars to get a, a meeting in place.
Okay.
Between Caltrans, the city, and the Transportation Authority to talk about that. So that, again, is on the work, on, on, in the works.
And Justin, I appreciate all you do.
It's just a matter of hours in the day.
Yes. And you're, as we discussed earlier, you're, you're very short-staffed.
Completely, yes.
If it's, if you could, within maybe, I don't know, 30 days, get a, a letter out just with our concerns and then attach that in the information item so we can just have it know that it's been done and the public can know it's been done? I don't.
Looked, it's, making sure I'm getting direction from the entire council.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
And we did kind of identify earlier this evening, all the things on the work plan. So again, we can do our best. It'd be difficult for me at this point in time to commit to it.
Okay. All right. That's a bummer, I know. You're super busy, but.
I know, yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. I was thinking I could volunteer to draft something for you that I want said.
Again, if that has the, we're, we're the info item, if, if there's a way of getting the consent of the council. And that's actually a reflection of what the council is.
I believe that this is actually, sorry, through the mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Councilmember.
I believe this is something we've already voted on and decided. It's just a follow-up to get confirmation that they've received that communication.
Okay. I guess maybe there's two diff, two different things. One, specific to the collapsible bollards and the striping for the permanent. But I also was interpreting that you were talking about the, with this upcoming changeover, which was the focus of the info item, it hopefully happens in early October, that I think it was a matter of the temporary striping that they're going to be putting down. We said it, it didn't go well the last time. I was interpreting that to be the temporary striping. So.
Well, I think it was signs, right?
But it is that we're talking about.
No, it's striping and signs. It's both.
Sort of striping.
Right. But that's tied to the.
I'm assuming the things that they're putting, and maybe, just tell me, are the, do you know if the striping and those, that they're putting down will be the final, it's temporary as well?
It will be the, and I think we've had some conversation about this, and so I can understand where you may be coming from. So I think the configuration is the, kind of the final configuration, but the striping will be temporary striping.
Okay.
Because there's still going to be a number of months' worth of construction. Then when, when they're all done, then they'll put down the final striping.
Okay. And just having that in mind to, I just, I want to, I hope and I want to see it done in a better way than it was done the first time.
Let me ask Alex and, and Justin, would it be helpful if we had a temporary or ad hoc subcommittee, I mean, to draft, to draft the letter for, and that would, rather than trying to do that tonight, or?
No, I have a feeling we can draft the letter. It's going to be fairly simplistic. And it's basically do it right the first time, and we can explain what we think we mean. Or, or just having a conversation with the Caltrans representatives to, to better understand, not to repeat what happened last time, because that was not well done, as we all know. And I think because this is the permanent, the permanent side of the bridges are being opened up, there will be some, some permanence to how it flows that, but this, but Justin's right, the striping will still be temporary. I mean, part of this really is, Caltrans just needs to do the job they're supposed to do and do it well and do it right. And we can certainly encourage them to do that.
And if we, I mean, if we need, you're organizing a meeting with them to talk to them about this? Is that what you're saying?
Sorry. No, there's a few different things going on with Caltrans. The, the meeting is specific to the long-term landscaping.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear.
But there's, but there's weekly, weekly meetings and beyond that, related to the coordination of the project. So that, communicating that at the weekly meetings.
Okay, that's fine. I just think all of us up here and the residents here, we just don't want to have a repeat of what happened the first time. It was not well done. Thanks. If you can convey that, that would be most helpful. Thanks. And Justin, I know you, you know intimately the area that we're talking about.
Okay. Great. Are we good on that? All right. Okay. Let's see. No city manager report, council, council member reports?
As the vice chair of the Environmental Committee and vice president of the LGBTQ Committee and all the other things that we do in the League of Cities, I'm leaving tomorrow to go to the annual conference where I believe, I don't know how many staff and council members are going. And I will be happy to report out what happens when I return.
Great. And as much as I wanted to go, at least on Thursday, I just, with my work, I can't, unfortunately. So I leave it in your capable hands. You're, I think you're planning to go.
Yeah, I was just going to report out also. I'll be going, leaving tomorrow as well and coming back Friday.
Okay, so.
And happy to report out on activity there.
Appreciate. You're both going and, and of course.
We'll see Alex there and.
Yeah, look forward to staff reporting back. Any other council member reports?
I, I'll just report that on this. I met with Len Maderman earlier today, just not planned, but was able to. And it turned out that today there were people coming down from San Francisco from the Army Corps of Engineers. So this is on the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority project. And it was, it was really great to meet with, there were probably six people who came down, including the new colonel from San Francisco. She just got transferred here from Virginia. And she's interested in our project and wanted to see the reach of the project. So we reviewed that with her and her staff, and it was a very positive meeting. And I, you know, it's just, those people rotate every two years, so it's good to get their attention. And she was, you know, gracious in coming down and actually giving us about an hour and a half of her time.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So our next meeting will be October, October 9th or, that's right. And I want to make sure we, we did cancel the meeting on September 18th. And so our next meeting will be October 9. And I did want to adjourn tonight in memory of the victims of September 11, 2001. With that, thank you, everyone, for attending this evening, and we will see you in October.